Good evening. I'm going to call to order our April 22nd, 2025 City Council meeting. I am your Mayor Brendan Kalfis. We will start off with the invocation by Pastor Karina Reed, and then I will lead you all in the flag salute. So if the pastor can come up, and everyone please stand.
Good evening. Please bow your heads with me. Father, we just thank you for this evening. God, we thank you for your resurrection power, and that same power is in this room tonight. We call upon your Holy Spirit. Come and dwell in this place, Lord. Father, I ask that your spirit of wisdom would come upon each leader at the dais. Lord, would you give them the words that they need, and the truth that they need, and the ears that they need, and the eyes that they need, to bring unity into this land? Every great city, every great city, Lord, is brought together and raised up and lives long in a spirit of unity. And so, Father, we seek that spirit tonight among the leaders. Give them everything that they need, Lord. Give them everything that they need. May your truth prevail tonight, so they can lead this city well. Lord, we thank you for who you are. We thank you for what you do. We thank you for being here today. Guide every decision. Guide every discussion. In Jesus's name, amen. God bless you all.
Thank you for that. If everyone can please remain standing and face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Mayor Kalfis?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwan?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here. All right, we will move on to presentations. We will start this meeting off with the presentation by Great Oak High School of the California Mayor's Cyber Cup, Coach Christian Meglio. You would like to come forward to the podium. Madam City Clerk, if you'd like to read the...
Yes, I am happy to read the Certificate of Achievement that is going to be presented tonight to the coach and the entire team. Coach, if you would like to bring up your entire team, you are welcome to do so at this time.
They're the ones that did all the work.
Yeah. The California Mayor's Cyber Cup event focuses on the regional importance of cybersecurity education and community engagement by providing a platform that allows all students to engage and grow their skills. Many teams made up of students from participating middle schools, high schools, and community colleges competed for the 2025 Inland Empire Desert Regional California Mayor's Cyber Cup. Students worked together in teams to solve various challenges related to cybersecurity and information technology. The City of Temecula congratulates the team for placing first in the high school division and wishes them continued success in future endeavors. And we're really proud of Coach Christian Meglio and the students, Kevin, and if I pronounce your name wrong, I'm so sorry, Kevin Cowell, Terrence Co. Tafoya, Meredith Lowe, Jerry Pooh, Jonathan Tafoya, and Charles Zhang. Congratulations all.
Coaches, we would love to hear from you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Our cybersecurity program is very young. It started five years ago when Jonathan Tafoya's brother started it, and Anthony Tafoya asked me to do this with him during COVID. So we did it remotely at first, and the teams have grown, and they are very, very amazing young people, and I'm very proud of them. This Mayor's Cup is very important to us. It gives us a chance to really flex our talents against the local schools here. As was mentioned, there were 341 students, 209 out of high school, and this is the second time we've had the honor in the past four years to present you the Mayor's Cup. And thank you so much. And we also have the third-place team, and they're coming up. They're up and coming, so they're ready for next year.
Would anyone else like to speak on behalf of the team?
Any of you want to? Go for it.
If not, no worries. We can get started with our speeches here. Well, first off, we love having... Oh, no, no, you go. You're first.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Tafoya. I am the president of Great Oak Cyber Security, which is the club that helps organize teams so we can compete in these cybersecurity competitions. And I just want to thank the organizers of the competition. We're so thankful that we have the opportunity to compete and show our skills at a local scale. And yeah, we're so thankful to compete because it's a really fun time. And again, I just want to thank once more Mr. Meglio for helping us go compete. So we can't wait to come back here next year to present you guys the Mayor's Cup. So thank you, guys.
And we're proud to welcome you here. I know we missed you last year, but we're glad you brought the cup back to Temecula. It's an honor to have you. We have these certificates of achievement for each one of you. If you want to come up, I can do them individually. And while we're doing that, if my colleagues have any questions or comments that they would like to say, feel free to go ahead.
I do.
Perfect.
What is CP17?
Oh, yeah. Want to explain it to them? We do a competition in the fall semester as well called Cyber Patriots. It's a national competition, and these are the T-shirts for that competition. So CP stands for Cyber Patriots, and 17 stands for this is the 17th Cyber Patriots Competition. And Terrence here is representing Cyber Patriots 15. So yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're also competing this month, this next week, in the National Cyber League.
Wow. Good job.
Congratulations. If my colleagues want to come down for a group picture, more than welcome. Charles, I'll hand that to you. Meredith? There's yours. Congratulations. Terrence? Evan? Jonathan? And Jerry? Congratulations. And Coach, do you want to hold the cup for the picture?
Yeah. Where do you want us at?
Right in the middle.
Right in the middle.
Yep. We'll surround you. You guys all go in the middle?
Oh, right there?
Yeah. Hey, come around here, everybody.
Get real close to her. Get real close to her. Wherever you want me. Yeah. Here, I'll squeeze it right here. I go on my tippy toes. All right, here we go. I can hold it for you. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. You're going to help me next year. You're going to help me next year. You're going to help me next year.
All right, Mr. Mayor, we're going to keep this celebration going. Next up is a Certificate of Achievement for Temecula Prep Patriots Girl Soccer CIF Southern Section Division Eight Champions. So if the coaches and athletic director and the team would like to come on up, we'd love to recognize you. The City of Temecula congratulates the Temecula Prep Patriots Girl Soccer Team on winning the 2025 CIF Southern Section Division Eight Championship. The season ended, and the team receiving the first CIF Championship for Temecula Prep Girl Soccer and the second CIF Championship in their school history. The City of Temecula is proud of their dedication and wishes them continued success in their endeavors. I'm going to go ahead and name off the players. Again, I apologize if I don't pronounce your name correctly. Ava Vosberg, Kenna Stephan, Giselle Zerrit, Bailey Lit, Kayla Batista, Chloe Walsh, Lucy Alfargo, Vanessa Fragoso, Abigail Serna, Lisa Colaro, Mia Flores, Kendall Stone, Isabella Coral, Brooklyn Harrington, Edekimi Kosoko, Sophia Darshuk. And then head coach is Isaiah Bardellis, as well as Athletic Director Jason Lit. Congratulations to all of you.
Coaches, we would love to hear from you if you have a few words. You do rock, paper, scissors to see who gets to speak.
Thank you for having us. It's an honor, obviously. Mr. Stewart was actually at our campus, breaking ground on our brand-new bleachers, press box, everything, concession stand, and these girls put it to good use this year. So first time in school history, a soccer team from our school has won a championship. These girls had to fight really, really hard, lots of injuries and other things, and they put it together. And Coach Chai, as he goes, is just an amazing coach, and took these girls from day one and just, they had an amazing run. They actually made it to semifinals of state as well. So that was the furthest the school has gone in anything. So we just appreciate being here. It's a great group of girls, only two seniors, and so we're very excited for the future. So thanks again.
Congratulations, Coach. That was an amazing accomplishment, and you'll realize that the lessons you learn throughout your athletic career will carry you throughout your entire life. And the more you bond as a team, and the more games you win, and the more championships you win, the closer you get. So the first time in school history is pretty amazing, something to be proud of. Any of my colleagues have any words of wisdom? If not, we can come on down for another picture while I hand out these awards. Ava? Congratulations, Ava. We can hold our round of applause till the end. That way we don't... Yeah, we can hold them to the end. Kenna?
She's not here.
Kenna's not here. Kenna doesn't get one, then. You guys don't have to give it to her. Giselle?
We're also learning to listen. It's okay. Bailey? Kayla? Chloe? Lucy? Vanessa?
Not here.
Not here, also doesn't get one. Participation trophy, though, she gets. Abigail? Congratulations. We're almost done, I promise. Lisa? Mia? Kendall?
Thank you.
Absolutely. A few more here, sorry, guys. Isabella?
Thank you.
Brooklyn? Three more. I'm going to mess this one up. Perfect, don't have to say it. Sophia? And last, but certainly not least, Isaiah? Oh, Coach gets it, all right. Coach, we'll have you two in the middle, if possible, and we'll surround you, and we'll face that way. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. 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 Thank you very much.
Concern for the commissioners that it was a little closer to the residents. But after having our questions answered, having the design and mitigation on this project, and the lack of any residents voicing concerns, and driving out there and seeing what that would look like, we voted for this project four zero. And the project includes Adetch Brothers, which I've heard from a lot of people are very excited about. Great hot chocolate. I know they probably have great coffee, but great hot chocolate. And also the quick quack car wash. So this, we think it's going to be a really sharp project for that area, and that it will be good to have something in that land right there. So we voted four zero on that. I think that's it. Next slide. I think that's it. Any questions? Planning Commission? All right.
Any of my colleagues have any questions? I do have one question, Commissioner. If we can go back to that slide of the Gaucho picture, and you said that the sign isn't good, the final sign, if we could pull that up, just so we can see what we're talking about, where it says Gaucho Grill, and again, this is just my opinion, if there's a possibility where it can say Gaucho Grill at the bank. Because I feel like the historical is, it's always going to be the bank.
Right.
And I would love it, you know.
That's a good suggestion. We can, we can put that in there. We weren't voting on the sign that night, but we did give them the feedback that we thought it should be more historical. So, yeah, I like that.
Just a thought.
So we'll take that back. Matt's got it written down.
Thank you for listening to my opinion there.
Thank you. Thanks for your feedback. All right.
Absolutely. We will move on to our ready commissioner, Commissioner Avantov.
All right. Well, Honorable Mayor and City Council, the Ready Commission is made up of six residents who serve together in an advisory capacity for the city council, and we make recommendations on inclusion within city events, services, programs, policies, and we enhance community relations. And our last meeting was April 10th, 2025. We received presentations on Arab American Heritage Month and presented a related proclamation. The presentation included introductory comments from Chair Pastorian, who could not be here tonight, a video outlining the importance of the celebration, a presentation by Commissioner Leckers on census data and historic information, and a video message from Supervisor Washington, and the reading of our proclamation. Four proclamations were requested and four were provided. We also received updates on Temecula's Culture Fest and provided general direction regarding the same. The commissioners received a presentation from the Temecula Community Services Department regarding upcoming Culture Fest events. Topics of discussion included general layout, craft vendors, food vendors, entertainment information, school clubs that are going to perform. And just want to remind everybody that Culture Fest is May 17th, 2025, from 10 to 3:00. Hope that you guys can make it. Lastly, the commission's next meeting will be Thursday, May 8th, here, 6:00 PM at Council Chambers, and we'll be celebrating Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, as well as Jewish American Heritage Month, and all are invited. Hope to see you there.
Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? We will move on to our public safety report by our Chief of Police, Captain Regali.
Mayor Calvis, Council, City Executive Staff, members of the public, good evening. Certainly a pleasure to be with all of you tonight. I've arranged some stats for you for the month. We had a very busy March, and I'll share some of the calls that we responded to in a few minutes. But for the month of March, total calls for service at 5,459. You'll see there in the pie chart, the breakdown in our priority calls, priority one through four. Priority one calls comprise just 1% of our total call load for the month, at 78 calls. Priority two, 34%, and just over 1,800, and so on. And obviously, the priority three calls made up the bulk of the calls for service that we responded to. On the left-hand side of the chart there, you'll see the average response time for our priority one call, five minutes, just over five minutes, and 10 minutes for priority two. Obviously, those are most serious calls. I'm pleased with the five-minute response time. We are navigating very crowded, very busy Temecula streets and getting to these very important, critical calls in a very timely and expeditious manner, so I'm pleased about that. Next slide. So I wanted you to be able to see when we talk about priority one calls, these are our most critical incidents. This is the information that comes to Sheriff's Dispatch, pushed out to the deputy sheriffs in the field. These are critical incidents that require an emergency response. So you can see it, this breakdown in the priority one calls, juvenile medical aid, and I think I touched on this on our last month meeting, juvenile medical aid continues to be our number one priority one calls. This is where the deputy sheriffs are responding to some sort of a emergency involving a child, whether that's at a private residence or sometimes at schools as well. So you see that breaks up, that makes up the bulk of them at 19. AOD is just an assist of other department, that could be the fire department requesting an emergency response for assistance, or some other law enforcement entity. And then you see the breakdown from their robbery with nine, aggravated assault seven, traffic collisions, and so on. I figured this might catch your eye. At the very bottom of the page, found body. Nobody ever wants to see that, but so I thought I would just address that. That's how we received a call, responded deputies in emergency capacity to that, and it turned out to be unfounded. It was somebody who was sleeping, and we made sure that they were okay. Next slide, please. So I thought what I'd do is just to kind of give you an idea what our day-to-day looks like, you know, the, when we talk about critical incidents, we, you know, we are busy handling all kinds of calls, but I want to kind of give you just a rundown what March looked like when I told you we were busy. So I'll just go through this as an overview, kind of give you an idea. So starting on March the first, deputies were dispatched to a residence regarding a felony assault with a deadly weapon. When they arrived there, they found a victim who needed medical care. We provided emergency medical care to them. We found the suspect at the location. He was taken into custody and booked. On March 2nd, felony assault at a residence. When we arrived there, a victim who was in need of medical aid, we assisted that person. The subject barricaded themselves inside the house, refused to exit. We assembled additional resources to the location. We made entry, and after a brief struggle, found the suspect. He was taken into custody, and he was booked. March 13th, felony assault and burglary. The suspect fled in a vehicle. Utilizing flock, we were able to find deputies who were responding, were able to locate the suspect vehicle, and we attempted to stop. A pursuit was initiated, which took us into Orange County, at which point we used a pursuit immobilization technique, ending the pursuit and taking the suspect into custody. He was booked. March 13th, a robbery and a carjacking here at a business in the city of Temecula. Suspect fled in that vehicle, again, utilizing flock. We were able to locate the vehicle. A short pursuit ensued. Ultimately, the suspect was stopped, and he was taken into custody and booked. On March 16th, felony assault with a weapon at a residence. The suspect fled on foot. Responding deputies set up a perimeter. We summoned additional resources into the space. After extensive search of the area, suspect was found hiding, and he was taken into custody, and he was booked. March 18th, felony assault on an off-duty police officer. This did not occur in our city. It occurred in the city of Irvine. Suspect was tracked, suspect vehicle was tracked, utilizing flock to the city of Temecula, where deputies located him hiding in a parking garage, and in utilizing a SWAT team and SWAT team members, he was taken into custody without any incident and booked. And then lastly, on the 23rd, felony assault involving a firearm at a business. Deputies responded, rendered first aid, and the suspect was later located and taken into custody and booked. So the reason I wanted to share that with you, I want not just council, but members of the public to understand that while our deputy sheriffs spend the bulk of our time, and you look at some of these images up there, in the community caretaking capacity, which is what we do most of the time. But I also want the citizens to understand that when critical incidents occur in our city, when there is violent incidents that occur, that the men and women of the sheriff's office assigned to the Southwest Station are adequately trained, and equally important, equipped with the, with the technology that they need in order to help us do our jobs well, and to take criminal offenders into custody as safely as we can, and hold them accountable for their criminal conduct. And that's the important part. Like, we cannot stop what people are going to do, but I want the citizens to understand that when those incidents do occur, you, we will respond accordingly. We will take these offenders into custody and work with the District Attorney's Office to make sure that they're held accountable for their criminal conduct. And that's our charge, and the citizens of the city deserve that. And so I want you to know that the men and women who serve you on a day-to-day basis, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, are well-prepared to handle both community caretaking issues, and then also to respond to emergency situations and do what they need to do, and do it safely and do it successfully. And unless anybody has any questions for me, that's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Captain Regali. We appreciate and respect everything you and your deputies do for our community. We will move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have three public comments on non-agendized items. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional rules are listed in the agenda itself. First speaker is Joseph Austin, to be followed by Laurel Lamont.
Welcome. Hello. I've, I've got a topic that I'd like to discuss that I heard in the news today, a mayor of Lancaster said, I'll just read my thing. I'd like to mention that our Pledge of Allegiance says justice for all. It seems like there's not much justice for people like myself lately. There was a Southern California mayor, Mayor Rex Paris of the city of Lancaster, that thinks giving the homeless people fentanyl would be a good, ideal way to get rid of the homeless population, and supports a federal purge of homeless, committing genocide on people, not treating them like they're human beings. I say this because I hope that this city, this will not be the fate of this city, as well as a way to get rid of the homeless. I hope that this city doesn't stoop so low. My spouse and I are sober and looking for work as a citizen of the city, and I have been discriminated against many times when it comes to looking for work. I have had more police contact as somebody who lives outside and is sober, more than I did when I was under the influence. And I am noticing a lot of these people that are stuck outside on drugs, that do not get much cop attention, because that seems that it's because they are on the heavier narcotics that might lead to their overdose, and it gets rid of their problem. I implore you to step out of the circle of hate for these people, and I challenge you to care for them. It says in our Bible that Jesus Christ was homeless and poor, and if he were here in the flesh, he would come out for those homeless and broken and poor. Yet if Jesus was here, you wouldn't recognize him, and you are all programmed to condemn him and prosecute him for being in such situation. I, I challenge you to do as Jesus did and give to the poor, instead of trying to erase people's existence and their right to a life. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you. The next speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by our last speaker, Eric Faulkner.
Good evening.
I'm back. I live at Warehouse at Creekside, across the street, in a affordable housing building that this city gave $6 million to build, with no plumbing cleanouts and illegally charged tenants for parking. I was forced out of my one-bedroom apartment at 9:00 and some change into a two-bedroom apartment at 18:75. I make $52,000 a year for me and my son. That rent is going to go up in June to $2,047. For three months, that apartment was underwater due to the lack of plumbing cleanouts as the apartment flooded. This is affordable housing that you funded. Do you want to be transparent? Because I will share, because to qualify for affordable housing, I have to show them everything. I have to stand in front of them naked with every financial input-output. Are you willing to do the same with yours? You want to talk about handouts? My father committed suicide. My brother died in a trash truck, and my mother left us. I'm not an addict. I've worked my ass off to get here. Nobody pays my bills. I am not subsidized. I am not on EBT. We work here. When are you going to start representing the workforce? I am a constituent, and I live here. And what have you done? What are you doing? Who is going to speak publicly? Nobody from a local to a state level represents the workforce. Nobody. Do not ever tell me I'm not grateful. You want to talk about, it's a common term, government overreach upon conservatives, and I would generalize this, city is a conservative city. Government overreach created the housing crisis by zoning restrictions. You have your beautiful, single-family cul-de-sac homes because you didn't allow development to develop freely. It doesn't pay the bills.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Eric Faulkner.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council staff, Captain Regali. It's my friend right there. We've worked on a couple of things. I just want to bring up an issue. I've heard, I heard a council member, Matt Run, brought it at one of the meetings, and I heard over the course of the time on the Ready Commission where people would say, hey, when people see something, they should say something, right? In regards to crime, we know that there's an uptick, there's been five-minute response time, but I think there's some things that residents can do to kind of help with our law enforcement by creating like an S4, what I call S4 See Something, Say Something campaign here in the city. And you remember back in 9/11, where we were very vigilant as a community across the country, reporting when we saw things that didn't seem right? I think there's some things we can do in our city to get ahead of that by creating something like that, just a marketing campaign to really go out to citizens and say, hey, we're using our, we use these cell phones for TikTok all the time, right? But there's things we can do for it to record and help law enforcement as they investigate crime in our city, and kind of help them as residents when we see something, guess what? We say something. So an S4 program, so what that can look like is, again, recognizing suspicious activity, reporting safely, which means we don't ask, we don't ask residents to engage and interfere, but use the resources they have. How do you, when you're on the street and you see somebody, domestic violence, or somebody grabbing a purse, how to really look in and hone in to be able to identify the person that did it, to give proper information to law enforcement, they come on the side, on the scene? So that's, I think there's some things, when I've heard over the course of the time I've been here, where people say, I've heard you, Councilmember Matt Run, say it, I've heard several of you say it, hey, our residents, when they see something, say something. You know, and Google's your friend. I'm looking around at other cities that have something like that. Nobody's done a campaign like that. It hasn't been done since, I think, after 9/11, when we were trying to get people to report suspicious activity. So I bring that to the council here as an opportunity to expand resources to support our local law enforcement by having residents, you know, really take up the action as well to, again, when you see something in the community that's out of order, or you see something, you know, I mean, don't put yourself in harm's way. Use your phone, use your cameras in your homes, or if you see someone doing something improperly, take a good visual to identify what they were wearing, how they looked, to really report that to law enforcement, so we can help them in their efforts of keeping our city safe, because that is a priority. But we have our citizen warriors out here that should be engaged to do that as well. So I just bring it before you, there's opportunity to do an S4 campaign here, and it's just a, I don't see something, say something, and market that to our community, so also our members can get engaged with that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments for non-agendized items.
Thank you. Thank you to all our public speakers. We'll move on to our city council reports. We'll start off with Councilmember Stewart.
Well, it's that time of year again. The rod run is about a week and a half away, and so it starts on Friday night at 5:00 PM, 5:00 to 8:00. And that's usually a very local crowd, so it's kind of a really fun night, because you get to hear and see the cars actually cruising down the road. So if you get a chance, come out, May the 2nd, Friday night, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. It's always a good time. And then Saturday is the shining show, so that's when there's 550 cars out there that are pretty cool to look at. So if you're, if you want something fun to do, the first, the 2nd and 3rd of May, that's what I would do. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ron?
Yeah, I just have one quick slide and some good news. The work by Caltrions underneath the I-15 freeway to remove hazardous fuels has begun, and they're making remarkable progress. I haven't seen the underside of that bridge look that way for probably 20 years or more. A lot of overgrowth and a lot of lack of maintenance, creating a pretty high hazard severity zone for wildfire risk. So thrilled to see that happening, and, you know, a great job by the City Manager's Office and Public Works and, and others to help make all that happen, and just thrilled to see that happen before we move into our higher fire risk season. Thanks again.
Thank you very much for that. Councilmember Schwenk?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few slides. We'll start off with our Community Services Expo, which is Saturday, April 26th, 2025, from 10:00 to 1:00 here at the Civic Center. So during this event, you have an opportunity to learn about all the classes and programs that we offer, but I think more importantly, you get a chance to meet some of the instructors, and it's really a great time for you as a, as a resident to, to ask questions and to, and to really just get to know a little bit more about the instructors and city staff and, and, and all the, sort of the wonderful programs that we offer through this, through our activity guide. There's face painting, giveaways, crafts, games, so come out and enjoy this fun day with your community here in Temecula. Next slide.
All right. I am very pleased and proud and honored to announce that the city of Temecula won two California Parks and Recreation Society Awards of Excellence. So one for RTCSD Social Media, it was a marketing and communications award, and then our Public Works team won a Margarita Recreation Center, for the Margarita Recreation Center and a facility, facility design. And if you haven't been to the Margarita Recreation Center, I really highly recommend you go over there and check it out. The team did a wonderful job. The community has fully embraced the MRC, and I just really wanted to highlight these and acknowledge the hard work that staff puts in, and, and let the community know that you have a wonderful team of dedicated public servants who give everything every day of the week for, for you and to better our community. Next slide. All right. And so the last three meetings, I attended the Ready Commission meetings where we did the proclamations, so the top there, we had Black History Month, and then Women's History Month, and then last month was Arab American Heritage Month. So these are wonderful opportunities for the community to come out and celebrate the diversity that exists here in our community. I will say, for the Arab American Heritage Month celebration, I was really disheartened. I think the tenor in the community, and really the country in a lot of ways, has pivoted, and some of the student groups declined to come. And I don't fully know why, and I'm not going to speak on their behalf, but you could really feel that in that room that evening. And so I didn't want to present something that was, well, there's no picture for that night, and I didn't want to give the appearance that it was a celebratory evening. It was, it was, it was maybe a little moment of reflection, I think, for everyone who was there. So like was mentioned earlier by Commissioner Avantov, next commission meeting, they'll be doing a couple proclamations and presentations, so I encourage you all to come out to that, to that night. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So I just have one thing to share today. So as I'm looking out, I see a lot of nonprofits. I see Chamber is here. I see a lot of variety of people who even know nonprofits, maybe somehow, maybe you donate, somehow, maybe you donate your time. So I just wanted to put this out as far as information. So two years ago, many people know I work for a nonprofit, and we, well, I found out about this information about what's called a vehicle transfer program. So the RTA actually ends up giving nonprofits vehicles, which can be a small, retired small, mid-sized bus, a trolley, or a service truck, and it's to any 501(c)(3). So if you know of anybody who's needing a vehicle, they have lots of different types of vehicles. I really would encourage you guys to submit these types of, an application. It's really simple. I think it's like one or two pages. You just need to prove that you're a nonprofit status. And I will tell you, having driven this all the way from Riverside, it's, it was huge. It was absolutely incredible. And so if you have the opportunity, the website is right there on the bottom. It's, they're in great, excellent condition. Even the mileage is really low, because the RTA can only keep vehicles for only so long. So if it's something you're needing, I just want to encourage nonprofits to be able to take advantage of something like this. Definitely get on the website. It took us about two years to get through the program, or just until they, they called us and gave us the go-to come pick it up. So I just wanted to put that out there to any of you who might know of somebody who needs a vehicle. So that's it.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. I have a few slides here. We're going to put the first slide. This past week was a busy week. I started off with the First Annual Young Men's Career Conference, which was held directly back here in our conference center, which over 100 individuals from local high schools, Great Oaks, Chaparral, Temecula Valley, they all came, and there was an amazing list of mentors. I was honored to be on the list. There was Supervisor Chuck Washington was there, Chief, Fire Chief of Cal Fire Riverside County, Chief Weiser was there, many individuals, doctors, teachers, deans, lawyers. We had Commissioner Seismos there. The list of mentors was pretty amazing, and this is our first annual one. So for the high school kids out in the audience and watching, if you want to attend one next year, I encourage you to do so. But I also encourage you to reach out to any of, any of us up here, and anyone involved with the city, if you ever want a mentorship, or just someone to talk to about local government and local politics, we are all more than willing and able and want to help and mentor as many people as we want. So it was a great event, and I encourage you all to attend next year if you haven't been. Next slide, please. We also had Earth and Arbor Day and Easter Egg Hunt, which I got to take my littlest there, as you can see, and on the, was it the left-hand side of the screen for you? We had, we planted some trees with our local Rotary Club. So awesome event, great job on our Temecula Community Services, putting on the Easter Egg Hunt and having pictures with the Easter Bunny. Those are always great events, and I think a couple thousand kids came out to the Easter Egg Hunt this year, so pretty popular event. And my last slide here, coming up this Sunday, out of the archives in our Temecula Museum right down the street here, the 2025 Deer Bros Vintage Baseball Team will be presenting on behalf of the Temecula Deer Bros, which is an old-school baseball team that was around in the late 1800s and early 1900s. So that'll be a cool event. I encourage you all to check that out. That'll be this Sunday, April 27th, 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the museum. And that will do it for our city council reports. We will move on to our consent calendar. Item number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions, including the agenda. Item number two, approve action minutes of April 8th, 2025. Item number three, approve listed demands. Item number four, set public hearing to approve solid waste and recycling rates for commercial customers for fiscal year 2025-26. Please note that item number four is going to be polled in its entirety and will be placed on a future agenda. Item number five, approve extension of Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange Incubator Rent Waiver Program at the request of Subcommittee Members Calvis and Stewart. Item number six, approve First Amendment with Chafan &amp; Reeves, Inc., DBA Pedal Port for Pedal Boat Rentals at Harveston Lake Park. Item number seven, approve purchase and installation agreement with Helix Storm, Inc., for the lifecycle replacement of technology infrastructure for video storage and retention. Item number eight, award construction contract to Ace Capital Engineering for pedestrian ramp upgrades, citywide project PW 23-11. Item number nine, approve agreement for reimbursement with Home Enterprise IV for restoration work associated with the I-15 French Valley Parkway improvements, Phase Two, PW 16-01. Item number 10, approve Fourth Amendment with TY Lin International for the I-15 French Valley Parkway improvements, Phase Two, PW 16-01. Item number 11, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the Sixth Street Improvements, PW 22-16. Do any of my colleagues want to pull an item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
A motion has been motioned and seconded. Midas, item number four, please vote. That is approved, five to zero. I will now recess the city council meeting to our Temecula Community Services District with President Schwenk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will now call Temecula Community Services District Meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please note that we're all still here. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, we'll move to our consent calendar. We have one item. Item 12, approve action minutes of April 8th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us vote. All right, and that passes 5, nothing, 5, 0. Thank you very much. We'll move to our business portion of the calendar. We have one item. Item 13, receive recommendations related to 4th of July Drone Show and provide general direction regarding the same at the request of the subcommittee members, myself and Councilmember Stewart. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, indeed. We have a brief PowerPoint on this. Next slide, please. So as you know, this item went before the Community Services Subcommittee, where staff provided a little report on what it would take to do, to add a drone show component to the 4th of July Fireworks Show. So the goal was not to replace fireworks with a drone show, but to augment the fireworks display with a drone show component. The photos you see before you here are examples from the drone show that we had out here in front of City Hall this past New Year's Eve. It was the first time the city has done a drone show. It was wildly popular, and we had 150 drones at that show. So that's relevant, because, next slide, please. What we would be looking at for the 4th of July show would also be 150 drones. So if any of you saw the New Year's Eve show, it would be roughly the same size and duration. The individual animations would be different, and those would be designed based on whatever guidance the city provides, but typically they would be around a, you know, patriotic theme and items relating directly to the City of Temecula. The show would require a deposit of $10,000 for the company to start the design process, and the total cost for that show would be $35,000. And because we cannot have multiple items in the air at the same time, we would do the drone show first, drones would come down, and then we would launch the fireworks. So, next slide, please. So this map gives you a little idea of what the staging areas would look like. So this is an aerial view of the area between Paba Road and Rancho Vista Road. Along Paba, the building you see there is the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library, and then towards the top of the slide, the green areas are the ballfields at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, just for everybody's awareness. On the left side, you have the CRC, and on the far upper, upper right corner, you see Margarita Road. So to give you some sense for how things would be laid out, on the ballfields, you see the stage and the fun zone. Those are the areas where we would normally have those laid out for the 4th of July Extravaganza, for anyone who's been there before. And then the fireworks launch site in red, right off of Paba Road. That's a dry catch basin, and that is where the fireworks are always staged. And then down and to the left, we would be using the lower parking lot area of the library. So if you've been to the library, you know there's an upper parking lot area, and if you follow that around, at the bottom, there's a big square area that's conveniently flat, located about a third of the way, maybe quarter of the way down the hillside. That's where the drones would actually be staged. They would launch from that area. The drone show would be up over the hillside, so the majority of people would have a good view of the drone show, and then they would return to that pad, and then the fireworks show could commence. So that concludes my overview of what was discussed at the Subcommittee meeting and what is being brought before you now. So unless there's any questions, I'll turn it back over to you, President Schwenk.
Yeah, thank you very much, Director Russo. So I'll just open it up now for council questions, comments, or discussion. Do I need to pick on anyone, or I'll entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I will note for the record, there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you very much.
So, so where's, where's the money coming from for this?
It would be come from the general fund, well, actually from TCSD's fund, from their operating budget. I figured this would probably be, you know, a topic of conversation. You know, when we did the New Year's Eve Drone Show, you know, we weren't really sure what that would look like, although I had a pretty good idea that would be successful. And so we thought, hey, you know, this was wildly successful, let's do it for the 4th of July. So it wasn't really thinking in the, in the, in that sense of, you know, let's allocate, you know, X number of dollars for it. I guess since we got rid of the ice rink, you could sort of say we've moved money around and we can make it happen. But look, at the end of the day, I think if, you know, if the council has an issue with, you know, the funding on it, we can certainly table it. It's not, you know, one of the things that we try to do at these subcommittees, at least I try to do, and I know Councilmember Stewart feels the same way, is, you know, when we have an event, we always look to try to enhance it. And this is certainly a way to enhance it. It's like, you can't, you can't make a case that the drone show was, you know, not a success or whatever. So it's, it really would add a certain level of, you know, it would up our game a little bit. But to answer your question, it would come from the same exact pile of money that everything else comes from.
Okay, so maybe I'm the only one that has some concerns here, but yeah, I can't support this. I'll just, I'll just say that right now. We took $78,000 roughly out of the ice rink in Old Town. Here's my perspective. We're, we're in, to say the least, economic uncertain times moving forward this year, and a lot of our conversation has been, at least in the recent past, on fiscal conservative approach to our budgeting. There's only a handful of things that I think right now should be our focus and priority for expenditures and additional expenditures. One of those is public safety. I'll always put that out as first. But also increasing tax revenue, business success, and retention. So we took, you know, an important, I think, event for bringing folks into Old Town and remove that investment. And then we're saying, well, we're gonna take that opportunity for business growth and, and exposure and, and move it to a place that doesn't have that same opportunity. I think that's a disservice to the businesses and folks operating in Old Town personally. It's just my opinion about it, in that if we're going to take, you know, even a fraction of that, that money, I think we should be reinvesting it in Old Town instead of somewhere else. But also, I just, you know, $3,500 a minute to watch some drones fly around, I just, right now, just can't support that.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, I would have to agree. I think the drone show for the New Year's Eve Great Job was awesome, and I think everyone agreed that that was a pretty amazing event. I just feel that the 4th of July right now, the way it's set up is very successful, and I think it will be, continue to be successful. So I'm okay tabling that for now.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm, I'm the same. I was in the subcommittee, and it, we were still coming off the high of the New Year's Eve Drone Show. It was just absolutely spectacular. So to add that layer onto the 4th of July, we were thinking that could be, you know, something really spectacular. But I'm totally okay with not doing it also, based on the financial uncertainty that we're, we're rolling into right now. And so I would, I would be in favor of just mixing it too, because we do do an amazing 4th of July event. So we don't really need to make it super amazing, you know? It's already a great, great event, so, yeah.
All right. So for me, I remember, actually, we were in subcommittee when you brought this up several years back, and I remember one of the things that you had talked about was you were concerned with veterans who were having PTSD, and I think that was one of the reasons why you kind of started looking into this and stuff. And I think we can all say we absolutely loved the idea and the concept. For New Year's Eve, it was something new, it was something different, but I have to, I have to really agree with the council because I don't want to fully table this like never again. What I'd like to do is possibly bring this back in January. Let's see where we're at financially for the following year, because I think this is an incredible idea. I think it's fun, it's something different. I just think right now with the financial, you know, instability, I think we would be better off just, just pausing, but 100% bringing it back, at least in January, to bring it back through our budget and see if that'd be something.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, and you guys are all looking at me like this is my thing or whatever, and it's like, this is like what we're here for, you know? Like, like, you know, we bring things to, from subcommittee to council, is the whole point of a subcommittee, and to get consensus, right? I will say, I think you will all be happy to know that the same subcommittee met today to discuss cost recovery measures for some of our events. So I'll be looking for your support on cost recovery measures in a couple weeks related to some of our events, and we'll have that conversation. But, yeah, I mean, I think I'm totally fine tabling this, and we can get through budget. There's a ton of stuff we didn't know even two months ago. And if you sort of look at what's happening right now in the economy, it kind of looks like a heartbeat, you know, like things are, like you never know what's gonna happen. So, yeah, this is, this is something that, you know, we get through budget season and we kind of revisit it, like, we can revisit it, you know? We can, we can certainly figure it out. And if you want to bring the ice rink back, ice rink back, you know, we can have that conversation too at some point, you know? So anyhow, okay, so I'm, I'm okay just tabling it with that direction to the City Manager. All right?
Thank you to the subcommittee, by the way, for your work. It was good. It's a good idea.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Okay, so I'll move on to our Director of Community Services report.
Thank you. Just a couple items for this evening. Okay, so the next dance series performance coming up at the theater here in Old Town is going to be Flamenco Vivo with Carlota Santana. That will be Saturday, April 26th at 8:00 p.m. If you haven't been to the theater, it's straight down Main Street. Just go past the fountain, head straight down that street. The theater's on your right. Best kept secret in Old Town. There's a free master dance class, so for anyone out there who's interested in dance, what we do is every time we have a big dance group come in, they offer a free master dance class to anyone in the community who wants to give that a shot. So that's at 1:00 p.m. on Saturday. For more information, you can go to temeculacad.gov/theater. Next slide, please. And we'll have our monthly art walk coming up Friday, May 9th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Merc and the Lot on Main. That's right in front of the theater we just talked about here in Old Town, and that's a great opportunity for local artists to exhibit their arts and crafts. We also have refreshments and live music, and it's just a lovely way to spend a little bit of time on your Friday evening. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. General Manager, anything?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
All right. Or Directors, anything? All right, we're adjourned.
All right. The successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, no meeting. Temecula Housing Authority, no meeting. Temecula Public Financing Authority, no meeting. I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting and kick off our public hearing with item number 14, approve fiscal year 2025-26 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. I will ask for a staff report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Frank Perez with MDG Associates, here tonight to present the 2025-2026 Community Development CDBG Annual Action Plan. First, I'll provide a very brief background regarding the CDBG program. CDBG dollars and funds are federally funded program that strives to create the development of urban communities, viable urban communities through promoting, preserving, and assisting the development of affordable housing, improving and expanding public facilities and infrastructure, and then improving access to residents for public services. CDBG activities do need to meet one of the three national objectives as outlined by HUD that are on your screen. Most of the Temecula activities that get funded through past years and previous year funding benefit item number one, which is benefit low and moderate income residents of the community. Temecula's CDBG program is guided by two major documents, the first being the Consolidated Plan and second being the Annual Action Plan. Brief little bit background on the Consolidated Plan, it is a five-year document that we bring to y'all every five years as far as an approval. It gives us the general framework in which the city uses to assess its housing and community needs. It also identifies priority goals and projects for funding allocations of that year. It also includes a market analysis, needs assessment, and strategic plan assess, and assessment of fair housing. The city is now on its third consolidated plan cycle since it became an entitlement grantee back in 2012. What we're bringing to you this evening is the third year of the current consolidated plan cycle, which is that 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan. So like I mentioned, each program year, we fund through CDBG dollars for City of Temecula. Activities must meet one of those consolidated plan goals that the city has identified in that five-year plan to make sure that it's, it's structuring those activities and projects along with the needs of the city under that funding source. The Consolidated Plan has identified six priorities. The priorities are intended to keep them broad, but yet still focus and really steadfast those funds to really gear those activities that can be implemented on a yearly basis. The activities do include, or those priority needs, oops, apologize, improving neighborhoods and public facilities and infrastructure, promote the development of affordable housing, preserve your existing housing stock through activities such as critical home repair programs, provide public services for low and moderate income residents as well. And then, again, provide public services for homeless and those at risk of being homeless as well. The 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan is the next major focus in what we're bringing to y'all tonight. While the Consolidated Plan gives us that framework over the five years, we take individual five, individual five years to implement those funding sources on an annual basis. HUD requires extensive community outreach. The City of Temecula, during our application period, staff held two technical workshops in the month of December, opened up the, what we call the NOFA or the Notice of Funding Availability to our, all of our consultation matrix and our nonprofits in the local area and our stakeholders. Staff also met with Finance Subcommittee in the month of February of 2025 for funding recommendations, which are reflected in the draft Annual Action Plan as part of the, the agenda for you tonight. City also did conduct a 30-day public review period, which does commence, which does end tonight with the public hearing that is opened by City Council. What you see on the screen here is a summary of CDBG funding for 25-26 program year. The city is anticipated to receive roughly the same allocation that it's received in its current program year, 2024-2025. HUD at this time still has not yet released the official allocation for the 25-26 program year, so we run off their guidance and recommendation of same-level funding that we received in the current year. There could be some fluctuations, possibly up, possibly down, and each category does have some regulatory statutes that can happen in administration, public service, things of that nature. Under, under the public service category, there is a regulatory standard of 15% of the annual allocation that can be allocated towards nonprofits and public service providers. Under the administration portion of the budget, a maximum of 20% can be allocated towards the administration of the, of the program for that year, which covers consultants or staff time as well to administrate the program on that yearly basis, and the remaining funds go towards capital improvement projects. Again, like I mentioned, the funds are on an anticipated level at this moment, just because HUD has not yet released the official allocation. We do anticipate that coming in the coming weeks, most likely coming out as far as mid-May. There is guaranteed funding for that 25-26 program year, so that definitely want to make sure. We are just waiting for the official allocation coming out from HUD. What you see on your screen here, the city did receive 11 public service funding requests as a total during its NOFA or the Notice of Funding Availability. And as I mentioned earlier, about a maximum of 15% or equivalent of $87,269 may be allocated towards public services and spent entirely on low and moderate income residents of the City of Temecula. Finance Subcommittee's recommendations are for you on the screen. The remainder of the city's CDBG allocation, like I mentioned, falls under the capital improvement projects. Roughly about $392,891 could be used towards capital, those capital improvement projects, which you see on your screen, most of which going towards ADA Accessibility Transition Plans to address the city's priorities under that plan that it completed a few years back. There was also an application submitted by Habitat for Humanity under their Critical Home Repair, Repair Program, excuse me. Staff does recommend a, the approval of a resolution for the 25-26 Annual Action Plan as an application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the funding under federal CDBG grant. This does conclude my presentation. I will be here to address any questions. Did you have any?
Thank you very much for that staff report. Any of my colleagues have any questions? With that, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have two public comments. The, each speaker is limited to five minutes. The remainder of the rules are in the agenda packet. The first speaker is Sharon Morris, to be followed by Marshall Hamilton.
Welcome, Sharon.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Mayor Protem and City Council and staff, and thank you to, oh, Frank, there you are. Voices for Children is the court-appointed special advocate or CASA program for Riverside County. We have a memorandum of understanding with the Superior Court to recruit, train, and support very special community members who step up to volunteer to advocate for one of the 6,000 children in foster care in Riverside County. Last fiscal year, we served 16 children who were removed from their homes because of abuse, neglect, or abandonment from the City of Temecula. That was at a cost of about $40,000, and so- And so the funding that Frank just explained that would be awarded to us, and we hope you recommend, will help us to serve another three or four children from Temecula. So I don't have a big story for you this evening, and I won't use my, my five minutes. I know it's been a long evening, but I do want to say thank you to each and every one of you for caring about kids in foster care. They really do need us, and we really appreciate you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
And our last speaker is Marshall Hamilton.
Welcome, Marshall.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. My name is Marshall Hamilton. I'm the executive director for the Safe Family Justice Centers. We were founded right here in Temecula in 1998 and been operating ever since. And tonight, I just want to kind of share the work that we're doing under these public funds. So every day, we see the kind of pain that nobody really wants to see or wants to imagine. We sit across from parents who've packed a bag for their children in silence, unsure where they'll sleep next. We meet teenagers who carry invisible scars from what they've seen at home, what they've endured at home, and we listen to what people have been told by abusers, by systems, and sometimes by their own doubt that there's no way out. When we have survivors walk through our door, everything changes. At SAFE, we create a space for healing. We remind survivors that they're not alone, and we walk with them step by step through safety planning, court dates, counseling, housing services, navigating the complex systems around them, housing searches, and rebuilding their lives ultimately. And it all starts with someone who will look them in the eye and say, "We've got you, and you're safe now." That's kind of why we're asking for these funds. We receive public funds, we receive these CDBG funds from multiple cities, but the funds here in Temecula stay here in Temecula. We served about 200 residents of the City of Temecula last year with these funds, and every one of them has a story that stays here in Temecula, oftentimes with children who are growing up in that cycle of violence. And our CDBG funding pays for a position, or part of a position, of one of our advocates who walks through with survivors during that time. And it creates a bridge between fear and safety in the community and between surviving and healing. So I just wanted to thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for supporting us for the last 27 years, and just really thank you for the availability of these funds to go toward survivors in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marshall. Do we have any more public comments?
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments.
With that, I will close the public hearing, and if there's any discussion, we can have that now. If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, but I do want to make a statement because I was on, I was the one who took part in this decision of how it'd be distributed, and there's two agencies on that list that we are statutorily obligated to support. Now, the funding amount is up to us, and neither of those decided to come to this meeting and, and give us a reason why we should, so I decreased their funds to be able to give it to the organizations that actually do the work in our city and took the time to actually come here. And just the fact that those two came here, it's like, why, why, why do people take advantage of a system that we have to fund so they feel like they just don't have to show up and ask for the money? It's just, I, I had a real problem with that as I was sitting there listening to this. It was like, I, I, I couldn't do it. So I reduced and gave, gave the people who actually showed up more money. So that's what I wanted. I want those agencies to know that, that if you want the money, show up. So there. So I made the motion to accept, accept the recommendation.
I will second that motion. That has been motioned and seconded. And that passes unanimously. Thank you for your comments, councilmembers, Stuart. It is always nice to see the taxpayer dollars that we receive stay in Temecula, and especially to great people like the public speakers that came and are helping out kids on a daily basis. So thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 15. Introduce ordinance amending Title 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code to allow for auto mall 10 acres or greater as a conditionally permitted use in the community commercial zoning designation LR 240458. May we have a staff report, please?
Of course. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're talking about two big topics. One is creating consistency and obviously creating economic opportunity in the community. We have a current automobile zoning that allows for the CC zone to have indoor automobile sales, but it doesn't allow for outdoor sales. As the city continues to urbanize and we have less land, obviously, new economic opportunity is dictated in the general plan, and the City Council continues to support economic activity. So the proposed changes include updating our land use matrix to allow a conditionally permitted use for auto malls 10 acres or greater, and this makes the municipal code more consistent with our general plan goals and policies. We also are adding a definition of auto mall to ensure that what, any type of development along these new regulations would be up to the standards of what the city wants, which is a bona fide multi-development auto mall. The proposed amendment went before the Planning Commission in December 2024, and they recommended that it come before the City Council. We brought this before the City Council Subcommittee and appreciate the Subcommittee's work on this, and they recommended that we bring this forward to the City Council. This project would be exempt according to Section 15061B3 of the California Environmental Quality Act, because it can be seen with certainty, there'd be no possibility that the code amendments would have significant impact on the environment. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the proposed amendments. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments? I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and a motion.
Move approval.
That has been moved and seconded. And that passes unanimously, five to zero. Moving on to the main event here, business item number 16. Receive presentation regarding the city's boards, committees, and commissions, and provide general direction regarding the same. For this one, I would like to change it up since throughout staff's presentation, we will be answering questions and discussing amongst the council. So if I can open the public hearing and receive public comments first, I will do that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'll go ahead and note that this is a business item, so there is no public hearing associated with it. However, we do have one public speaker on the business item itself. The speaker is limited to five minutes. All other rules are in the agenda, and the speaker is Jeff Kingsburg.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. I think you know me as a longtime resident and also a current community services commissioner. I'm serving the third year of my first term. I'm honored and grateful to be in a commissioner role, and I'm full of pride for our city. A little bit about my experience I wanted to share at this juncture. I've enjoyed supporting the department events and providing advisory feedback as a commissioner. Over my term, I've had opportunities to emcee both the Plain Arrow Art Show Awards and also a park reopening. And then Mayor Kowas had mentioned the Young Men's Career Conference. I was able to serve as a mentor at that last week, and that was, that was quite an honor. There are two monthly community services events which I frequently attend. They are the Senior Center Lunch Celebration and the Temecula Valley Museum Culture Day. And I wanted to pass on that often I am the lone appointed or elected official at those, those two events. And again, you guys can't do it all, and, and that's why I think commissioners indeed do play an important support role. As a longtime basketball coach, I'm going to sneak in a little terminology here and a little analogy that you guys are the starting five, and commissioners can provide a very strong bench of support. Also, you may be where I'm a lifelong educator. I've served in various capacities in our school district for the last 38 years. I do understand your process tonight. I do think it is wise to look at processes, procedures, and then, you know, monitor and adjust as appropriate. That being said, I do have a couple concerns and questions. I am curious as to how much feedback you have received or will receive from city staff, particularly those who do work directly with commissions and commissioners. Additionally, I'm curious if you intend to receive feedback on the progress of our commissions from commissioners themselves. The direction you set at your January 28th meeting to officially change the annual city council and commission joint meetings into joint workshops could provide this opportunity. And so tonight, I'm speaking as an individual, only representing myself. I'll just say I would welcome this opportunity for the Community Services Commission in the calendar year 2025, the joint workshop. If there are specific areas which would benefit from commissioner attention through assigned liaisons or the formation of subcommittees, you could direct us. By working together and setting goals, the currently structured commissions would have the opportunity to meet your desired targets. And then I do have a couple of, it's certainly unsolicited advice, but I do have a couple of cautions I'd like to share as you work further in your process. One might, would be to be cautious in using comparative city data regarding commissions to set your direction. I mean, simply meeting the county averages, whether it be our number of commissions or total number of community events, will make us just that average. And I know comparative data can be a good baseline component to include, yet I don't believe it should drive our expectations or our decisions as a city. Often, our level of investment can affect our outcomes. The second would be to move deliberately when considering the consolidation of commissions. It was suggested by councilmember Schwenk at your January 28th meeting that a potential outcome might be to merge or consolidate commissions, such as the Community Service Commission with the Ready Commission. The Community Service Commission has a very broad range of programs and events that it oversees, while the Ready Commission has been tasked primarily with delivering the proclamations for various groups. And by your accounts, the City Council had performed it quite well. The Ready Commission was authorized by the council just a few short years ago. I believe the city should avoid the perception of minimizing, or even worse yet, perception of eliminating the Ready Commission. This could lead to unnecessary further civic discord. In closing, while it appears that you may seek to move comprehensively and expeditiously on this item, maybe you will consider an incremental approach. With another apparent change to the selection processes for boards and commissions, you may consider implementing that before any major restructuring or consolidation. In the meantime, please invest in the current commissions to create models which will maximize our potential effectiveness. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Do we have any more public comments?
No, that was it. Thank you, Mr. Kingsburg.
Well, seeing as there's no public hearing that I need to close, we can move directly into the staff report.
Yes, we will go ahead and ask Jonathan and/or Chris to go ahead and put up the presentation. Excellent. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the next slide. So Mayor and councilmembers, we are here tonight with unfortunately a little bit of a lengthy presentation based on council direction from last time. We will go through it as quickly as we can. We will stop and ask for questions after each of the three sections, and we, council will have an opportunity to provide direction throughout the presentation and at the end as well. Next slide, please. So these 10 questions are really the direction that we are seeking today, and, and these 10 questions are really, go to the heart and the core of the subject matter jurisdiction of the existing commissions, as well as numbers and makeup, and if you want to make any changes, what are those changes? If you want to make any changes to the appointment process, to the joint meeting process, what are those changes? So it looks like we're seeking a lot of direction. We will need opportunity based on that direction to come back at future meetings for implementation purposes. Next slide, please. So we're going to go ahead and get into section one out of three of this particular presentation, and in this section, we're going to go over the brief history of this agenda item. We're going to talk about boards, committees, and commissions generally. As you know, there are 484 cities now in the state of California, and, and all have some version, or many have some version of boards, committees, and commissions. And then we're going to go through the current Temecula community profile. Next slide, please. So the local authority for our boards, committees, and commissions actually comes from the Temecula Municipal Code. That is our local law. The Temecula Municipal Code actually established the Planning Commission only. It only established a Planning Commission, and then it gave the City Council authority to go ahead and establish other boards, committees, and commissions as it needs via resolution and ordinance. Next slide, please. So just a quick note, so I don't have to keep saying boards, committees, and commissions, I'm just going to refer to commissions more broadly. Please know that that reference is to all boards, committees, and commissions. So the commissions were established at different times for different purposes over the last 35 years. On January 28th, the City Council provided unanimous direction for a wholesale review of the commissions. This is this city's first wholesale review of all of its commissions. Council asked staff to conduct historical and regional research related to commissions as well, and we have that for you today as well. Next slide, please. So big picture, what are boards, committees, and commissions generally, and what is their purpose? These groups are advisory groups that study specific topics or policy. They gather public input, and then they make recommendations to the governing body, the City Council, on matters that are assigned to them. Some do have statutory responsibility or local law responsibility. In our city, Planning Commission has statutory state responsibility as the land use body. An Old Town Local Advisory Committee has local law responsibility through our Old Town specific plan. All typically have an identified work plan approved by the City Council with a self-generating agenda. This is an important note as to the, the council drives the actual work plan of these commissions that are advisory in nature. These bodies are distinct from the City Council, who retains final decision-making authority for the community. These bodies are distinct from staff who implement council direction and administer the city's programs and services. These bodies are actually distinct from the community at large, too, when they're acting in their official capacity, because their responsibility is that of a holistic focus in lieu of an individualistic viewpoint or preference. Next slide, please. Generally speaking, boards, committees, commissions, task forces, and other advisory groups exist to address the modern-day needs of a community. Over the last 35 years, our commissions have represented an opportunity for meaningful civic engagement and resident feedback. Commissions are meant to evolve with the community as the community changes by way of growth, priorities, technology, efficiencies, as new issues and topics arise. Tonight is the City Council's opportunity to create that alignment, should it so desire. Next slide, please. Speaking of community, our community has changed a lot since 1990. So are these 2025 quick facts are actually reflected out of our, out of our economic development study that we do every year? And so as you can see, our current population is about 110,000. 20% of our population is under the age of 16. So something to note, our median age is 37. Our average age is 38. That, that gives you a general idea of who the average resident is out there. We are very diverse by way of gender makeup and by way of racial and ethnic makeup. 80% of our households are family households. So we do have a little bit of a younger community. And then 65% of our community is owner occupied. So this really gives you that, that picture of what Temecula as a suburban community currently looks like. It is important to know that 27% of our community speaks more than just English at home. So as we're, as we're moving forward and we're thinking about how do we reach out to our segments, that's important to note. Next slide, please. We have a highly educated community. As you can see, only 83% of our community does not have a high school graduate or a degree or a GED. So that is only, that's, that's a huge number. In addition, we have several other segments In addition, we have several other segments of our population that have some college, an associate degree, bachelor's degree, master's degree, professional degrees. So we are a highly educated community. Our average household income is $145,000, with a median income of 115. That being said, it is also important to note that almost 9% of our community lives below the poverty line, whether individually or with children. So it shows you a little bit about, again, modern-day community. And then on the other side, you see that kind of the makeup of the actual workforce. 60% of our community is employed in the civilian workforce. I know we have some amazing veterans programs. Less than 2% of our residents are in armed forces actively. And then again, most of our community is in the white-collar classification, with another 16% in blue collar and 17% in service and farm industry. 71% of our folks drive by themselves. But the good news is their average commute is only 38 minutes. So you can take that information, a quick snapshot of our community today. Next slide, please. So at this point, we are at the end of section one. Does council have any clarifying questions of the facts presented for section one? Yes, council members do.
So what is the non-labor for, not in labor force? Is that retirees? Is that, okay?
Yes, that could be retirees, that could be those that are currently working on some sort of a doctorate program and not employed, you know, for a variety of reasons. That could be individuals that are currently staying at home for other reasons. That's, that's.
So that's why Costco's really crowded on Mondays?
That is, yes. That is why Costco is crowded on Wednesdays, yes.
34%.
Next slide, please. All right, we're going to go into section two now. Now, we're going to get specific to Temecula specifically. We're going to look at the history and existing purpose of each commission in Temecula, as it was originally formed, as well as what their current resolutions state. And then we're going to present some information about various commissions in Riverside County as requested. Next slide. So our existing boards, committees, and commissions, we have a Community Services Commission, a Planning Commission, a Ready Commission, Traffic Safety Commission, and an Old Town Local Advisory Commission. One note I do want to make is that we also have a Temecula Community Services District. I did have a couple of questions on this pop-up in the past. Please note that Temecula Community Services District is a legal entity that was established at incorporation for annexation purposes to overtake certain service areas. It has nothing and no legal relationship to the Community Services Commission at all. Next question, or I'm sorry, next slide. So what you're going to see is some slides here that actually are in the same format, just giving you a snapshot of each of our commissions. The Community Services Commission currently has five members, and it meets monthly on the second Monday. The current charge of this commission is to review and make recommendations on topics related to Parks and Recreation element of the general plan, and to work to provide Parks and Recreation services and programs for the community. Historically, this, the Parks and Rec Commission was established in October of 1990, and then it changed its name to the Community Services Program, Commission in 1993. It's important to note, the original commission was created to oversee new parks, the creation of new parks and facilities. Obviously, in the last 35 years, the city has grown a lot. We have over 40 beautiful parks and a ton of facilities. So the development of new parks and facilities is no longer at the level that it used to be. It also used to oversee the naming or renaming of city parks and facilities. As council is aware, it is the city council now that goes ahead and names or renames, mostly renames at this point, existing parks and facilities under its council policy. And then over the years, it's generally provided guidance on community services-related services, programs, and activities. Next slide, please. The existing purpose of this commission is identified very clearly in its Resolution 2023-44. It's basically to make recommendations to the council regarding Parks and Rec facilities and the component of the open space conservation element of the general plan. It's to make recommendations regarding programs, events, and activities. It's to collaborate with community partners. It's to serve as ambassadors for the community. If you look at this existing purpose, you will see a theme with some of the other commissions as well, because there's also others that are responsible for collaborating with community partners, building relationships, serving as ambassadors. So we'll note those in additional slides. Next slide, please. Planning Commission. This is our five-member statutory body. It meets on monthly on the first and third Wednesday. It is specifically charged with our fulfilling the responsibilities of our statutory planning, planning agency for the city of Temecula. Its topics are related to specific plans, zone changes, plot plans. It conducts legally required public hearings. It was actually established as an emergency ordinance on our date of incorporation, so to act as our temporary planning agency. And then later on, in 1990, we went ahead and created formally the Planning Commission. Again, its focus is statutory. Next slide, please. Here is, I won't go through all of them, but these are the specific, it's the specific purpose of the Planning Commission. Every single one of these existing purpose line items are directly tied to its state law statutory responsibilities. So whether it's zoning and land use regulations, general plan, all of that, this is the exact same purpose you will see in other cities for their planning commissions as well. Next slide, please. Traffic Safety Commission. Currently, it has five members. We do have one existing vacancy on there right now. It meets monthly on the fourth Thursday. The current charge is to review and make recommendations on topics related to speed zones, stop signs, signals, pavement markings, traffic design, and engineering. Its history is interesting. It was created in 1990 as two separate commissions. There was a Traffic and Transportation Commission and a separate Public Safety Commission. Then in 92, they combined it to Public Traffic Safety Commission. Then in 1993, they changed from seven members to five members. And then in 2023, we changed it to, this council changed it to Traffic Safety Commission, and council now actually has a Public Safety ad hoc subcommittee. So historically, in the previous years, there was a lot of focus on presentations. This makes sense, a lot of general education and reports about streets and traffic. This makes sense because the city was developing. So, you know, as, as new streets, cul-de-sacs were being built up in the 1990s over the last 35 years. This was the, the stuff that was coming to the Traffic Safety Commission, and they were giving guidance on. And then they also advised generally on topics related to traffic and transportation. Next slide, please. So you will see here, based on their resolution, they are also to serve in an advisory capacity to provide recommendations on traffic safety, transportation, encourage public input, be the reviewing matter for some traffic, safety, and transportation matters, and then serve as ambassadors again for the community. One of the things that's really important to note is the traffic safeties charge is statutorily covered under the Planning Commission as well. So that is really important to note, that the Planning Commission does have decision-making capacity on some of the things under land use that may also come up under traffic safety and transportation. That's why a lot of times the Traffic Safety Commission acts in an advisory capacity to the council, but also for, to the Planning Commission as well. Next slide, please. Our Ready Commission. So seven members, one vacancy right now on this commission as well, meets monthly on the second Thursday, reviews and makes recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion with city, within city events, services, programs, and policies, and enhances community relations. It was formed in August of 2020. It's hard to believe, it's already been five years since this has been in place. It was formed as a part of the Ready Initiative. So its historical focus was that multi-phased, multi-year Ready Initiative. You, some of you council members may recall, there was a three-year work plan associated with the Ready Initiative that, that consisted of a variety of the then-city council's ideas on what it would like to do in this space. Some of those things included doing a city council protocol manual that was available to the public. Some of them included doing an equity core value as a part of our Quality of Life Master Plan. Some of them included incorporating the budget process to go to commissions. Some of it included having better community relations between the Riverside Sheriff's Office and, and our businesses. And so a lot of the things you see five years later, that was a part of the Ready Initiative, which has been completed. The other thing they were charged with was creating some sort of a community event, a cross-cultural community event. Luckily, we are on our fourth year of the fantastic signature event now, Culture Fest. And then over the last two years, the council has also provided them with the responsibility of doing proclamation, certain proclamations, and then again, continuing to build relationships with community stakeholders and TVUSD. Next slide, please. These are all, I won't go through all of them, but these are all of the purpose points in the Ready Resolution that the council provided for them. As you can see, there again, is a lot of general recommendations, building strong relationships, acting as ambassadors for the community, identifying opportunities, giving general guidance on policies that are brought to them with an equity lens. And so you, you're probably, you're probably seeing some overlap right now. Next slide, please. And last, but certainly not least, our Old Town Local Advisory Committee. It currently has seven members. It also has a vacancy right now. We have been notified, there is another upcoming vacancy on there as well. The current charge of that particular Old Town Committee is directly tied to our Old Town Specific Plan. Oddly enough, this is the group since 1990 that has changed over the most. So based on our records, it's been called Architectural Review Committee, Old Town Historic Review Committee, Old Town Temecula Historic Review Committee, Old Town Historic Review Board, and then eventually, Old Town Local Review Board, and then eventually, Old Town Local Advisory Committee. It also, at one time before redevelopment was dissolved, had some oversight in Old Town over the redevelopment as well. Next slide. So these, its purpose again, is very specific. Those 12 items are directly tied to go ahead and meet the requirements of our local laws as identified in the Old Town Specific Plan. Next slide, please. All right, now for the research. Okay, so you instructed us to go out and, and figure out what the other cities in Riverside County were doing. So there are 28 cities in Riverside County, that includes Temecula. 54%, more than half, have two commissions or less. I'm going to give you the reason for this on the next slide. 32% including, including Temecula have three to five commissions. And then 14% have six or more commissions, meaning four out of 28 cities. It's really important to know, out of those four, three out of those four cities are charter cities, and some of their commission structure is tied to their charter. 93% have a public, have a Planning Commission, meaning, in fact, the only cities that don't have a Planning Commission are Canyon Lake and Blythe, and that's just based on the makeup of their community. And those two cities, the council acts as the Planning Commission also. In 50% of the cities, there is a Community Services Commission, or some variation, like a Parks and Rec Commission, or a Arts Commission. In 18% of those cities, there is some sort of a Ready Commission. So a Ready Commission, a Human Relations Commission, a Culture Commission, those types. And then 14%, four out of 28 cities, have a Traffic Safety Commission or some variation. Five is the most common membership number on commissions. Next slide, please. So a note now about that more than half of the cities only have two commissions or less. Those particular cities have a very high use of limited-term task force. So essentially, what they do is while they only have two standing commissions, two or less standing commissions, most utilize a limited-term task force or working group of residents on an ads-needed basis. The group is usually project-based or issue-specific. The term of the group ends when that final recommendation is made to the city council. The Blue Ribbon Committee for Quality of Life Master Plan is a great example of a working group for Temecula. In some other cities, their working groups are actually smaller. They'll have five to seven folks that will come together for a particular purpose. Usually, it's made up of stakeholders that are directly impacted by that issue, and then they'll go ahead and make the recommendation to the city council, and, and they'll be disbanded at the, at the end of the final recommendation. Next slide, please. All right. So while no other cities actually have an OTLAC, there are cities that have kind of a one-off, single group to address issues that are specific to their city. So for example, there are some cities in the desert that actually have mobile home parks, those, so they have a Mobile Homes Commission, or they have a Historic Preservation Committee. So it's not unusual to have a, a one-off commission to address a specific need. Now, you might be thinking, what about those cities that are close in, in population to us? There's four specifically, all four of them are general law. Corona, which has a population of 157,000, it has two commissions, a Planning Commission and a Parks and Rec Commission. Harupa Valley is 105,000, it only has a Planning Commission. Manife, 102,000, two commissions, planning and Parks and Rec. And then Marietta has four commissions, a planning, Parks and Rec, library, and traffic. It is important to note that Marietta has its own library. Next slide, please. All right, that was a lot of information. So we are, in the next slide, going to start asking for some direction. But Mr. Mayor, before we do that, do you or your colleagues have any questions about the section two information that was provided to you?
Do any of my colleagues have any clarifying questions? Seeing none, we can move forward.
Okay. So, next slide, please. And we are at our first direction point. So we need to be able to answer from you all the first four questions of the 10 questions we have total. So the first question really is, would the council, a majority of the council, like to make any changes to existing commission structure, subject matter jurisdiction, or any related processes? If yes, then you can consider the remaining questions. And those remaining questions are, which commissions would the council like to retain or change? What, if any, change is proposed to these subject matter jurisdictions? What, if any, change is proposed to the number of members that serve on these commissions? So Mr. Mayor, I, I would turn it back over to you to facilitate dialogue and responses to this general direction.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Let me just state my overall goals, so my colleagues can see how I want to do this whole process. The hope is that we come to consensus on each individual question as we're going through, and we have one clean motion at the end. If at any time that we feel that there's not, you know, consensus, we can absolutely do separate motions for separate items and go forward that way. But the hope is, is that we come to consensus on each of these individual questions, and at the end, we can take one large motion, clean motion for all of it, and we can be as direct and concise as possible, or we can have as much dialogue as possible. So if we can pop open those questions, and we'll start with that. Back to that last slide that Madam City Clerk had. Perfect. So the first question, would the council like to make any changes to the existing commission structure, subject matter, jurisdiction, or related processes? If yes, then please consider the remaining questions. I can kick that one off with simply saying, yes, I would like to make some changes. Is there any consensus on making changes to our commissions?
I agree.
Great. Yep. With that, we can move on to which commissions would the council like to retain and/or change? Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to kick that one off?
Yes, sir. If I was to just take a look and just putting out the names of the commissions with the information from staff directly, my, my recommendation would be to retain, obviously, OTLAC and the Planning Commission, and at this point in time, discuss disbanding the Community Services, Traffic, and Ready.
Any of my colleagues have any input on retaining OTLAC, planning, and looking into Ready, Community Services, and Traffic Safety? Councilmember Schwenk?
Yeah, so I, I just maybe want to address the commissioners in the audience before we get too deep into this conversation. we get too deep into this conversation. You know, like, and I appreciate the public comment as well. You bring up a lot of elements. This is certainly going to be a difficult conversation, especially with you all sitting right there, just staring at us. But, you know, I think I just want to say before I say, you know, some of the other things that like, you know, this comes from a good place. This comes from a place of wanting to better serve the residents, wanting to be able to pivot. We demonstrated that throughout our history with respect to commissions, and we've changed things when we needed to. And we might just be at that sort of, you know, inflection point now in our history. So, I didn't want to start talking without at least acknowledging and appreciate the commissioners that are here tonight, and the commissioner that, you know, that I've spoke with that have reached out, asking questions about this. So, I just wanted to lead with that, and I appreciate you all, and I'll have more to say on, you know, the role of commissions and things like that. Yeah, so, to answer the question, you know, obviously, planning has to stay. I think OTLAC needs to stay for sure, you know, although there's probably some makeup changes that we could do with, maybe even with respect to the architect, like maybe we could add a Resident at Large or something like that. But I do think with respect to TCSD, Ready, and our Traffic Safety Commission, I think we need to re-envision and reimagine what that looks like.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Schwenk. Councilmember Ron?
Well, yeah, so, first of all, good evening. I, I think there were, let me say this differently. A lot of our commissions and boards are operating far outside of what their original intent was. And so, I think it's useful, after 35 or so years, to have this conversation, to see what it is that we need to do differently. That said, I agree, I think Planning Commission and OTLAC as unique, sort of more statutory-defined boards and commissions needs to stay. The others, though, I think have served a very critical function in our city, and I think there was a point in time for each one of them when they had a very clearly-defined role, because there was something that was pressing in the community that urged their creation. And then, a lot of those commissions and boards continued because they could still serve a valuable function. I've always been one that's more open and transparent government, more community involvement, more participation, encouraging a lot of that. And so, this, to me, is really disheartening, because, you know, by my count, we've got 16 members of boards and commissions that were just saying, meh, you know, we appreciate the help, but we're good. And I'm not quite at that place yet, because I don't think, I don't think we've outlived the usefulness of that kind of community interaction. So, I don't mind re-imagining what these boards and commissions' roles. I agree, Traffic Commission and its various iterations over the years has served an important function, but yeah, statutorily, Planning Commission really is the one that should have been responding to a lot of those needs over many years. With regard to Community Services, I mean, I got to say, they're the ambassadors of our community in many respects. They go to a lot of events, they serve a very important function, and in fact, you know, some of our more renowned council members came directly out of that commission. So, you know, I think, you know, and it was mentioned earlier, this is sort of the bench, and so I'd hate to lose that opportunity as well. But also, I think we're missing, you know, valuable perspectives, and that's one of, I think, the most important components for me, is being able to talk with those members, to get their input, to hear what they have to say. Now, part of I know, and I'll just say this now, is that our conversation here was partly because, you know, meetings were being canceled, we were having a difficult time recruiting people, you know, and getting folks to apply for these positions. I think that's partly just where government is right now, and a lot of people look at government participation with a bit of a side-eye, you know, and are keeping that at arms-length. So, I get that, but that's today, that's not tomorrow, right? So, I don't want to foreclose on that participation. And then, you know, the other piece is, they, you know, these folks serve, for me, as a very important pulse on the city, residents who live in our community, who are able to look at things with a very different perspective. We have a role as council members, and as electeds, and representing districts and so forth. These folks were able to have a much broader perspective and really provide us with that information. I'll also say, in the last several years, it was, for me, disappointing to see the role of, say, the Ready Commission to be just, you know, mostly proclamation-based. They did a phenomenal job responding to a need in the city when it was created at that time, and they accomplished all of those tasks. So, the question is, do we re-envision those tasks, or do we just, you know, move on and create? What is the new response that the city needs to be aware of? And so, I think the, there's a lot of issues that are still before us that we could use a lot of good input on, housing, transportation, seniors, special needs community. There's a lot of that that fell under many of, you know, the responsibilities of a community service or a Ready Commission. So, you know, so I'm not at a point where I'm ready to just have only two, you know, OTLAC and Public Safety, or, I'm sorry, Planning Commission. I'm not at that point right now. I think there should be a re-envisioning of what a third commission could do. Maybe it's a Quality of Life, we have a Quality of Life Master Plan, maybe it's tied to that, something discreet. And the last thing I'll say here, and to move on, is simply that, again, they're our appointees and our representatives. So, if meetings are being canceled, and if there's no substantive reason for them to be around, that was our failure as a council, because it was really up to us to say, you know, hey, here's some stuff we're struggling with, and we could use your expertise to provide that input on. And somehow or other, in the last few years, that just kind of stopped in some respects. We used to do it a lot more frequently, you know, and I'm going back to, you know, into older history, when we had cannabis issues and other things, where we said, we need all the commissions addressing these questions, and we want feedback from all of them. And so, there was a lot more engagement at that time. So, and then, the other thing, too, I'll say, very last thing, I promise, is that, you know, I had met with all the board and commission members several years ago, and had talked to each one about what they view their role as, you know, we had these great conversations. But the one thing I also encouraged every member was, you know, help us define your role, too. You live here, you're participating, you see what that commission's about. What is it that you think are priorities? Bring us items that you think you should be working on, and that, you know, would benefit the community. And for a very, very short period of time, some of that had occurred, but it just never really materialized the way it was. And maybe it's a lack of engagement, maybe it's, I don't know, I don't know what happened. But that never really materialized. So, you know, so if we're going to have this conversation, I want to make sure that whether it's OTLAC and Planning Commission, or any version of those, that we, as a council, recognize this very important responsibility to make sure they're doing something, and they're not just there as a perfunctory role to fill a seat and be an ambassador. So, I'll stop there.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ron. Councilmember Stewart?
All right. Well, I do agree, we need to look at this, for sure, because there's no sense in doing the same thing just because we've always done it that way. So, I think it's always good to review these processes and the need of these processes. So, you know, and just talking to staff about, you know, some of the commissions' meetings and the lack of subsidence issues and things they have to deal with, it does, it does make the question, you know, is this really necessary? Do they really need to be there, doing what they're doing? If, you know, so, and I think 30 years ago, 35 years ago, when the city became a city, our means of communication was really face-to-face. That was the only way you communicated with, you know, your fellow citizens, where now we have social media, we have a whole bunch of other ways to actually communicate with the public at large. And I think, I think that's also part of the question, or problem, or solution that we need to discuss. Is that something that we should move into? We should move into asking questions directly to the public, and we get immediate response. I mean, some places you get real responses, but anyways, yeah, so I'm definitely in favor of looking into this. I'm not ready to cut everybody loose at this point, but I really think we do need to look at the process. Even, do we need to have some of these commissions meet once a month? Could it meet once every two months, once a quarter? I mean, if it's, if there's not enough for them to deal with, why are we meeting? Why have the staff go through the process of creating an agenda and, you know, and if they have to dig for stuff to try to create an agenda, that's not necessarily a good thing either. So, yeah, I'm definitely open to the conversation, but I'm like, probably you all, I'm not ready to lop the heads off quite yet.
Let me get past that analogy there. I'll just start off with, I agree with what my colleagues are saying, and I do want to recognize all of our commissioners that are in the audience, that are, you know, watching from home, that, you know, you all are assets to our community, in your time and your volunteering, and we've seen how much you invest in our community. And your efforts are honorable, and they do not go unnoticed. And I think it's important to look, you know, on those slides prior to this one, it talked about the historical focuses of these commissions, and why they were initially created. For instance, the Community Services Commission was created to look into all the parks that we are developing now, and look into naming the parks. And if you look at the historical focus and the reasoning these commissions were created, they accomplished all of those things, similar to the Traffic and Safety Commission, right? When the city was initially incorporated in 89, we needed to put in more streetlights and stop signs, and develop these master plan communities, which the Traffic Safety Commission did and completed. If you look at the Ready Commission, for instance, and all the great work that that commission did, with the Council Protocol Manual, the citywide policies, the budget, the QLMP, the core values, the law enforcement, the metro team came out of that Culture Fest, all of those things, it had that three-year work plan, and it accomplished all of those things. So, these commissions and the commissioners on these commissions have done and accomplished amazing things. But I definitely think it's a good thing to look at, you know, the processes that we do, we currently do, and we need to meet the community where they are today. And like Councilmember Stewart said, it's a different time now than it was in 1990. When you had an issue in 1990, you had to come face-to-face, you had to come to the old city council chambers and talk to somebody, because there was no social media. You couldn't message someone on Facebook or Instagram, and it was via email, and we all know how easy it is to not answer an email, right? So, I think the community has changed. We need to, as a government and a municipality up here, evolve with that community. So, I agree with the, looking at the statutory commissions, keeping the Planning Commission, keeping the OTLAC Commission, but also looking at re-envisioning the other commissions, you know, the Traffic Safety Commission, the Ready Commission, and the Planning Commission, looking at those and looking at how we could re-envision those. But I, as, the same as my colleagues, it is hard to say, you know, we don't want any more commissioners, we don't want any of that. And my proposition would be to start something up similar to like a Temecula Ambassador Program, where we have individuals that volunteer their time, they're a Temecula Ambassador, they can still go to events, they can still invest, you know, volunteer and invest their time to getting out in the community, and those can be our voices for the community at large, even though, like Councilmember Stewart said, we can put something on, you know, Facebook or Temecula Talk, and we'll get all the feedback and more than we asked for. So, there's ways to listen to the community without speaking to individuals directly. But I think a Temecula Ambassador Program, which would be a volunteer opportunity for anyone, I think is something that I would be willing to, you know, be a part of that re-envisioning process. But so far, I've heard that we do have consensus on maintaining the OTLAC and the Planning Commission, which are our statutory commissions. You know, the ones that come into question are the Traffic Safety Commission, the Ready Commission, and the Community Services Commission. What would we want to do with those? What does the re-envisioning look like? So, I know that we want to retain those main statutory ones, but the discussion comes now for those three, you know, the hard topic, the Ready, the Community Services, and the Traffic Safety. It sounded like to me the Traffic and Safety Commission, and correct me if I'm wrong, colleagues, that can be absorbed in our Planning Commission due to the statutory is already listed in our Planning Commission. Would we be willing to say that we're okay with the Traffic Safety Commission being absorbed into the Planning Commission? So, I think we have consensus with that, and now it comes down to the Ready Commission and the Community Services Commission. You know, Councilmember Ron, you brought up the idea of, you know, a Quality of Life Commission, which I think could, you know, that would be more of like our People Commission, similar to the Ready Commission and the Community Services. So, there could be a Quality of Life Commission, which we have to, you know, start something new. We could look into the Temecula Ambassador Program, where it's not a commission, it's more just a group of volunteers that are willing to invest their time in the community. But I'm open to hear what you guys think as far as those two commissions, and I want to hear more on your thoughts, and go from there.
Well, I'll start off, because I really, I do a lot of chamber events, and those chamber ambassadors are such balls of energy, and they represent the chamber so well. And, you know, and it's a great thought of an ambassador program, because it really would, and if there's a training process that involves knowledge of the city, knowledge of, you know, city activities, city government, public safety, that is infused in these ambassadors, so no matter where they're at, you know, give them that nice badge that says, I'm an ambassador for the city of Temecula, and then, because I absolutely love our ambassadors at the chamber. I mean, they, they're amazing people, and they, they put such a good face on the chamber, especially. And so, so when I, when I, when I heard about the ambassador thing, I thought, you know, that could be a really impactful, I wouldn't call it a commission, but to me, like, we all are, everybody's busy, not just us, but everybody out there is busy. And so, to have that, that reach into the community with people other than us when we're not available, to have that kind of like bench, like we were talking about, that could extend into the community, that basically has a lot of the working knowledge of our city and our city government, that's out in the community, going to these events, and being seen at these events, I think there's value in that. So, I really like that, that whole ambassador idea. I do think, I'm not ready to kill all the commissions that are left. I think, I think we should have one that merges those two together, because I really, and I like what you said about the People Commission, because that's really what Community Services and Ready is, it's all about people. And so, if there's, if there's an opportunity to create a commission from those two that encompasses both of those values, I think, I think, and just from listening to staff again, you know, we need to have enough for them to do to make it worthwhile. And it just seems like there just isn't enough for them to do with the three that we, we were up considering. So, and I think combining those two, you know, and then, along with an extended ambassador program, I think that, I like that idea. So, that's just my opinion.
I have a quick question. So, one of the things I was thinking about, I appreciate and I like the ambassador idea. Would it make sense to take the ambassador, ambassador and kind of tie it in with this type of commission you're really thinking about? Because the question is, is what is the exact role that that commission would be in charge of? Why have we already not charged that over the last few years and given them information? So, I'm thinking if we have somebody who's an ambassador, they have a role to be out in the community, and then, almost as if like a task force, we can kind of roll that out, hey, we need some information within the community, they can be a part of that. So, it's almost kind of combining all of it into one, where we have talked about being able to have one individual person per, something we're going to talk about, coming up, but maybe just kind of combining all of that, so they have, if they don't have a meeting, they don't meet. If we have a purpose, we have a task force or something that those individuals that are community-based can drive forward, because they're within the community for us. So, I don't know if that's something that we can kind of look at entirely as well.
Absolutely. Councilmember Ron?
So, yeah, I mean, I think it's a great concept to have a merging of commissions and not lose the talent. There are, the applications, so several years ago, we ended up with close to 90 So several years ago, we ended up with close to ninety or more applicants during one round. Now, government and times were a little bit different then, but to me, that was incredible. And man, did we meet so many incredibly talented, dedicated, professional folks who just wanted to spend their time giving back to our city and their community. Um and so just, you know, I and I hate to say relegating them to ambassadorship. I I really, I kind of feel that because it's it's just not enough. I mean, you know, I I'm looking at you folks and I think we're just such talented folks, such contributions that we've we've gotten. And and here we are, you know, like if I were to put a list together of, you know, uh, you know, me and lists, a dozen things that they could work on every month. I mean, you know, the the Senior Master Plan is a great example, right? I mean, I I brought it up at a at a recent meeting and said, hey, we did everything that the Senior Master Plan said was was going to happen. But our senior population from, what, ten years ago now, is different. So what is it that we're doing or not doing for our senior community that could be beneficial? This is a great task for for that group to look at. Uh our special needs community, you know, when Mike Nigard was here as a council member, he was such an amazing advocate for the special needs community. And somehow, it's not that we're not still doing great things for the special needs community, don't get me wrong, but that 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 spirit, that advocacy, that penetrated, you know, council meetings and was always kind of a a part of our discussion, um just kind of hasn't, it hasn't been the same, right? And so institutionalizing some of these things, seniors, youth, uh higher education and training, you know, a lot of the pieces of the puzzle that we think are important and fundamental to our community for future growth, uh housing. You know, we've got people coming into our, you know, council meetings on a regular basis, talking about housing, affordable housing, workforce housing. Um and I know the Ready Commission has done a lot of work with that, but we're not done. We're not even close to being done with those issues. Um Quality of Life, you know, the Master Plan sets up all of these, you know, great aspirational goals of what the city is trying to do. This is a great opportunity. The biggest one, though, I will say, is budget. You know, one of the best things I saw that happened in the last uh bunch of years is where we kicked the budget review back to every board and commission and said, you know, give us your perspective on what we're what we're doing right, doing wrong. And I think that input was, you know, at that time, very valuable. Um so empowering, you know, folks in our community to to have that sort of relationship with the council, I think, is going to be going to be important. And if an amb- if folks just want to serve as ambassadors and go to, I wouldn't argue against it, don't get me wrong. Um if folks want to do that and that's that's the extent of their their role, then I have no problem supporting, you know, an ambassador-type program. But I agree, I think there needs to be some form and function. And I'm not going to come up with the name of this commission because that is not my talent at all. Um and I'll leave that up to somebody brighter.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ron. Councilmember Schwenk?
Maybe we can put into Chat G P T and see what it comes up with. Yeah, so I mean, I think we're all pretty close here. I think my my biggest issue um is is having an an actual task and goals and and performing them. Think I wouldn't be in support of, you know, merging or eliminating or doing anything if we don't have something specific that we're going to give commissions to do, right? Um, you know, and and sure, you know, an ambassador program, you know, could be great, you know, but I think most of the the folks that are on our commissions are already, you know, sort of tied in in other organizations anyways. I don't know that, um, you know, I guess we could say that, you know, we're, this is a good thing, but you might shake your head and say that's not a good thing. Um, you know, you're going to be, you know, ambassador for the community regardless of a title, right? That's just who you all are. You all, you know, you roll up your sleeves and you get involved and that's why you're here. That's why you served in the the roles you served in in the community for years, whether you're educators or business owners or whatever, military, whatever you've done, that's who you are. You know, giving a title of an ambassador isn't going to change that, you're going to still do those things. Um so I don't I don't know that, um, you know, we would need like a formal ambassador program. But if we're going to, you know, spin two commissions together, it has to have something meaningful behind it. I I really do think we need a People Commission. Um I think we need something, um, you know, and and to Councilmember Ron's point about, you know, transparency and, you know, having an avenue for people to um to listen to residents, I think is important. Um so the optics of of this would be pretty pretty devastating, I think, um if you were to just wholesale remove commissions. Um, you know, although, you know, there's efficiencies to be made, right? And I think we need to think about that. I think we need to think about being more efficient. Um with traffic safety, I know, you know, council members have really sort of made, you know, sort of clawed a little bit of that jurisdiction back in wanting some control over, you know, streetlights or sidewalks or crosswalks and and the like. And so, you know, there's value i- in that as well. We we are ultimately accountable to the public and there are things that I think we want to have greater control over. Um at times, you know, commissions offer cover to council in a lot of ways, um which can be good. Um but, you know, again, we're elected and it's it's on us uh to to uh, you know, to sort of handle some of the issues that come forward. So, you know, there's things that I'd like to handle handle more. Um, you know, if we were to, I I do think the budget portion, and that was something I fought for during the Ready Initiative, was having the budget go to all the commissions. I think that's really been an important part, a really important component of of just the commissions in 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 general. Um so I could see, uh, you know, a world where we have an ad hoc budget committee every year, where we spin it up with, you know, five new residents, let's say, and they handle the the budget process with us for the for that year. Um but I but I do think that, um, you know, we need to have a a place where residents can go. Um and 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 let's be real, at times, I'm sure residents maybe even want to see the commissioners more than they want to see the council members at times, right? And that's just the nature of politics. Um but but, yeah, I I think there has to be a has to be a space for um for us to sort of lay the groundwork. And and you're right, if they if they don't have something to do, that's on us, that's our failure. That's we, we're responsible ultimately. Um, we're responsible for the interactions between the commissioners. So, you know, we we should be reaching out to commissioners, we should be having conversations with commissioners, we should be learning and listening and trying to understand their perspective uh with respect to certain items, you know, coming before us or or the like. Um but that's an important component of it and and I would hate to see uh hate to see that go away.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Schwenk. I would have to say that, you know, it keeps coming back to me as effective and efficient government and how do we implement that? And I would agree, it sounds like we're building a consensus around that People Commission. You know, what that looks like, what the name of that is and what the jurisdiction matter of that commission is. Um, you know, we have to delve more into. But I think we are building consensus on retaining, and correct me if I'm wrong, retaining a People Commission. So one commission that the Ready and the Community Services Commission, um, you know, would essentially come into one commission, we can look at that in the next question. But does that sound like we have consensus on that? Seeing all the yeses. So it sounds like for question number two, uh which commissions would the council like to retain or change? We would like to retain the Planning Commission, the OTLAC Commission, and we would like to change um the Traffic Safety Commission. And that will go into the subject matter jurisdiction, which is number three of the Planning Commission, but also looking into, and we can talk about this in the next question, the subject subject matter jurisdiction of the commissions. So it looks like one People Commission, Traffic Safety, or sorry, Trap, Planning Commission and OTLAC Commission. So those three pe- commissions. That was confusing, I can repeat that too. Councilmember Schwenk?
Yeah, I just want to add one thing before we move off of this. You know, we're talking about retaining and changing. Um, we have the ability and we do it, we did it with the Blue Ribbon Committee. We have the ability to spin up an ad hoc a- anytime. And I think going forward, when we start having these conversations about specific items, whether it was, you know, the Cancer Task Force, so the I fifteen Task Force, or you go down the list of task force, maybe maybe there is value in having that approach at the beginning of every year. And we come to some consensus and say, hey, this is the item for this year, let's do it. And really dig into it in a way. So I I just want, there, you know, we're talking about, you know, retaining and changing and 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 I just want to, you know, for the record, say that we do have that ability to spin up something that has a really specific uh direction and 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 we could do that if we wanted to every year.
Mister Mayor, can I just go ahead and clarify direction? Um because I want to make sure we're 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 clear for follow-up purposes. So um I have uh that the council uh by majority vote would like to go ahead, by majority consensus, would like to go ahead and make some changes. They would like to keep Planning Commission and OTLAC um as presented for right now. And then they really are looking at disbanding the Traffic Commission, the Ready Commission and Community Services Commission. And they are looking at standing up a new People Commission. And we're going to work on the subject matter jurisdiction of that next, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So moving on to item number three, what if any changes proposed to the subject matter jurisdiction of commissions? To start that off, it sounds like the subject matter of Traffic and Safety will now go into the Planning Commission. And that's uh the OTLAC remains the same subject jurisdiction. And the quote-unquote People Commission, which has yet to be named, that is the discussion we need to have on, uh because I agree with Councilmember Schwenk, that it needs to be specific. Um, that way we continue with this effective and efficient government. Councilmember Schwenk?
Yeah, I'll go first if you don't mind. Um, I think Councilmember Ron had a great idea and I had the page up. And the Q L M P is the perfect framework for a a new commission that focuses on residents and in every aspect of their life. Um so you really have the framework built in with seven core values. So um if that's just a placeholder for now, or if that's really ultimately what we end up with, I think that's a really good place to start, if you look at uh that document and and what it represents.
Yeah, and and I think maybe we've given enough guidance for staff, hopefully as well, with, you know, other thoughts on what this commission could do to kind of formulate a plan. I mean, we're not doing this overnight. Um and I don't think we have to make that har- the hard and fast decision of what we're calling it because it can't be called the People Commission, that's just weird. Um but, you know, but whatever it is, you know, we have time. And and I think there's a winding down of all of this that, you know, I'd like to see, there are some some items on on all of their agendas that probably need to be worked through uh to the end of the year. Um so, you know, I hopefully if that's in everybody's thought process, that we have several months to kind of get this right and we don't have to trip over ourselves tonight in in making hard, fast decisions.
Yes, um Councilmember Ron, um for clarity purposes, um that we actually have additional questions that are going to reflect the effective dates and things like this. Um we just need, what we're hearing is general direction to go ahead and retain Planning Commission and OTLAC, general direction to disband, as it exists today, the Traffic Commission, the Community Services Commission and the Ready Commission. And then the general direction to establish a new commission around the Quality of Life Master Plan or the Quality of Life. Um and we just need a little bit more of a viewpoint of what do you, what would you like this commission to do? And then we will take that general direction under our city manager and research what we can come up with to bring it back to you. Um we just need, Q L M P is very broad, Quality of Life is very broad. So we just need a little bit more guidance on, if you had a People Commission, what would that People Commission do and what would be its self-generating agenda?
I guess my question is, if I can just add this, uh just to my councilmembers, what does that look like? I mean, obviously, you have something kind of in mind if we're going to push this forward, which it sounds like everybody's encouraged to be able to have something for the community, somewhere for them to go. But what is the direction and what does that at least look like? Some type of skeleton or some type of outline that we can move forward with? We don't have to have all the details, but I agree, the Q L M P is massive. Um so just out of curiosity, what does that look like to my colleagues?
Great questions. I feel like for me, I'm imagining the Community Services Commission and the Ready Commission and taking essentially the the most work that those two commissions did in their jurisdictions and combining those and making it one, you know, all-encompassing People Commission. Now, what the actual subject matter jurisdiction of that is, uh I think that would, you know, I I want to give them that that broad, but also very direct input on what that should look like. But in my head, I'm just picturing the Community Services jurisdiction, the Ready jurisdiction, combining those with whatever else you all think.
Yeah, I mean, I I hate to say it, but those commissions still exist, so maybe we should get their input at one of their meetings, right? I mean, why couldn't we, yeah, why couldn't we just kick this to them and say, hey, okay, so you've heard us, you know, played the tape back, it's as confusing as it probably probably is, but um, you know, and we've said all sorts of things. And I threw out my list of veterans, special needs, senior, youth, higher ed, housing, Q L M P, community services, budget, right? There's there's nine agenda items there for a year, that's nine months. Um I'm I'm just joking, but I'm ju- I'm just saying, those are those are self-generating. If you say, hey, once a month, you're going to address, you know, this core issue of Q L M P or or whatever it is. It's not too hard to figure out, but I'd like to, again, extremely talented folks, like to hear from them. What did they envision moving forward? Um they should be part of uh part of that process, I think.
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if you if you look at the Q L M P, it is a massive document, but it has, you know, seven core values, right? I think if we are doing this to just optically not um get rid of uh other commissions, I'm going to have a hard time with it. Um if we're just going to say, hey, you guys, we took the Community Services and we took Ready and we put them together and, you know, everything's going to be great and we're, they're going to just do proclamations, I'm not going to support that, hundred percent not going to support that. It has to have something meaningful behind it. And if we can't come up with something that's meaningful um in our lives or if the commissioners can't come up with something meaningful, then let's just get rid of everything. Because I I'm not going to sit up here and just for optics say, well, we didn't eliminate Ready and, you know, we did this and we did that, and there's really nothing there, there's no substance, that's just silly. I'm 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 not going to support that. So if, you know, the commissions can weigh in and we can come back with some more concrete, I mean, uh, we're going to have to. But but you're right, you have agenda items, you know, you get transportation, mobility and connectivity. Like, I could have like three or four agenda items for that, like, today. I also think that the format needs to change. I think the format needs to go to the to the conference center and it needs to be more of a workshop. It needs to be less of this and more like collaborating with the residents. So let's say if it's transportation, connectivity and mobility, let's say residents in neighborhoods are frustrated with cut-through traffic. And we want a commission that they can go in and and put dots on maps and, you know, all that sort of hands-on stuff. Um if it's related to the senior center, we'll have the meeting at the senior center and actually talk to the seniors at the senior center, right? Like, let have a meeting at the M R C if we're talking youth, right? Like, completely change what we're doing. Like, don't just do it to do it and optically, you know, we didn't eliminate anything. Do it so it's meaningful and find ways to embed that commission into the community that that desperately needs a voice, right? So do that. And whatever that looks like, I'll support. But if we're just going to roll it in to roll it in, I'm not going to support that.
Yeah, I I would like to chime in and I love your idea of changing the format. Because this does not invite the public a whole lot into the conversation. You know, they can stand up there, it's very intimidating. But they're sat sitting in a chair in the uh conference room, it's a lot more intimate. This is not intimate at all. And so I like the idea of taking that that one commission especially. I shoot, even, well, planning, that'd have to do here. But um but any commission like that uh that involves the public needs to have that more intimate contact. And that's what that would afford, this doesn't afford that. So I like the idea of changing the format, let's just shake it up, try it. We can try it for a year or two and, you know, see see how it how it comes out, you know? We can always change, that's the beauty part about government, we can make changes anytime we want, so. Um I but I I definitely like that idea. And I do love the idea of having more substance to this committee and having them actually have something to do. And, you know, your your cut-through street thing, that's that's a real issue for a lot of people. And so so to be able to have that conversation with a group other than us, because we're probably pretty intimidating to most of the public, but a a commissioner on a more intimate level, they can, people just spill their guts. So I like that idea.
It sounds like we're getting to the same place and the question is is the substance, right? What is the the meat of this commission? And there's the Q L M P, there's talk of what the other, the previous commissions, their jurisdictions were. Councilmember Ron, you have the list of of thing, items that could possibly be in the commission. Um but I personally don't have enough to give our city clerk to say, hey, this is a commission and this is the substance and the exact material that this commission can have. and this is the substance and the exact material that this commission can have with self-generating meetings.
I don't think we have to do that tonight, though, right? I mean, I think we've given enough, hopefully enough, guidance to at least move forward and bring something back for future conversation.
So I want to, Mr. City Manager, if you want to go ahead? Okay. So I want to try to summarize what I have here. I hear a majority of the city council saying they want some sort of community-oriented, people-oriented, commission, committee, whatever it might be. I hear you also saying that this group would have some sort of tie-in to the Quality of Life Master Plan. We do have seven core values in there. Each core value is gigantic with a ton of performance measurements. So we can just put a core value for them to discuss generally, but that's just giving a presentation. So when you say there's transportation, we can assign transportation, or we can assign housing, okay, but what with it, right? So that's the piece. What we can do right now, we also hear you want to do maybe workshops, maybe this committee doesn't, isn't a commission, and instead meets at the conference center and holds community workshops on a variety of topics. And then tries to get public input. So, Mr. City Manager, unless you indicate otherwise, I think we, as staff, need to figure out with this general direction at this point, we'll probably research if there's some other similar types of committees and commissions out there, and how they have structured themselves around a master plan or around something like that. And then we'd have to bring it back, because this is like still super vague for us to take action, establish resolutions, and things like this on it. And then we could definitely put it on the agenda for the existing Community Services and the existing Ready as well, and get their feedback and present that with whatever staff is able to find on our own.
Yeah, hundred percent. We knew if there was going to be direction given to stand up something brand-new, that we couldn't architect it from the dais tonight. So, I mean, I think that's wise to hit pause, give us as much direction on your vision for what that looks like, and we will go to work, and we will be back. One question that I would ask the council, though, are you resolute in the fact that you want to see a third commission? And if the answer to that is yes, because the alternative could be a task force, it could be ambassadors, it could be utilizing city council subcommittees. So there's a lot of different ways this could be. But if the council is resolute that you absolutely see the need to have a commission stood up, and what that commission does, we don't yet know, but we know it's people-based, we know it's softer, it's not technical, we hear the council. If you guys are resolute on that, that checks a box for me. And we will move off of some of these other ideas, and we will roll up our sleeves and we'll go to work on what we think we heard and what that could look like and best serve our community and take another bite at the apple. So that's my question for the majority of the council.
Mayor Protem?
If I can jump in real quick, you know, if I can combine some of the ideas that we're talking about as well, moving forward, you know, I don't know who it was, I think we all pretty much said it, you guys do excellent job and excellent minds. So why not combine a workshop with them to actually have that conversation? I mean, great, they're at the dais, but again, it's very impersonal. So why would we not get more personal and have a group meeting? I want to hear directly from them. I mean, I can come to each commission, but I'd rather have that dialogue and bring it down to a level where we can all have that conversation. Because can we truly come up with the right method and the right direction as to what this commission looks like until we have the voice of the people? So, I mean, we can sit here and want to fill in the blanks, and we could, but the question is, is do we really have that? And so my thing is, is put a pause for a little while and say, hey, listen, let's meet with the commissions, let's see what that looks like, what are they needing? Like, who's coming to the commissions? Like, that's my biggest thing. You know, like, I know people come, but are people bringing problems to you? Why are they not bringing problems to you? These are the things, as a councilmember, I want to hear and understand, because, again, I don't want to waste people's time. I don't, you know, you guys do excellent job in the community, I see you guys everywhere. And so I want, I specifically, I want to agree with Councilmember Schwenk, that I want to have more direction. But I want to have more direction from the people, not just only from staff, not just only from my colleagues, not only from you guys, but from the public as far as how we move forward and what they're needing. And if not, then we do an ambassadorship or something along those lines, but let's hear from the people themselves first, so.
So what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, telling my colleagues that it sounds like the consensus is, yes, we are resolute on having a third commission, it is just not clear what that looks like currently. But I feel like a placeholder of, hey, that we're going to have a third commission, and the outline of what that jurisdiction is going to be is TBD, to be determined, after having those workshops and meeting with our community services and getting a very specific plan and jurisdiction for that commission. Does everyone agree with that? Councilmember Schwenk?
Yeah. So, I mean, that, I don't know if that fully sums up my position on it. I don't necessarily, I'm not tied to the commission model, right? I think, again, I think like the ad hoc sort of task force has a ton of value as well. Because what that offers us is a lot of flexibility, too. So I don't know that I would say, oh, Mr. City Manager, we have to stand up a third commission, right? Like, my core problem is, is that it has to have substance, it has to have something to do, right? And it can't just be that, you know, we optically don't want to eliminate every commission or whatever, right? Like, if it's an ad hoc task force that we give direction to annually, or whether it's a commission that has an executive director that is, you know, working off a, you know, Quality of Life Master Plan template and is pulling things from that, is it more community-driven? I don't know what the answer is. I know, you know, and this is coming from a commissioner. When I was appointed as a commissioner in 2012, you know, I didn't really know what that entailed. And I went to my first meeting, and I'm like, well, what actually do we do? You know, and you sort of, like, sort of learn, and it's like, okay, well, you are kind of an ambassador in community services, but then you give a little bit of input, but then council still is the ultimate, you know, decision-maker. You know, we would judge a Halloween contest, and, you know, we would do, you know, a Christmas lights tour and things like that. And, you know, our community's changed, and things are different now, and we have to figure ways to meet the public where they are. And I just don't know what that looks like. I don't know if that's a task force, I don't know if that's a commission, but I do know that there has to be something where a commission is meeting the people, meeting the residents where they are, and solving problems in a meaningful way. And whether that's transportation-related, or senior-related, or youth-related, or, you know, special needs, or whatever it is, it needs to be something that's meaningful. And so if that's a commission, great. If that's, you know, a task force annually, fantastic. So, I don't, that didn't answer your question, Mr. City Manager, it probably complicated things even more, but that's how I feel about it.
If I can add, kind of one of the things is, I feel we might be putting the cart before the horse. What if we were to just slow down for a minute? Like, we have the direction, where you guys have the direction as far as which commissions, you know, we want to, we want to move them. But if we're all in consensus of a workshop, which sounds like we want the opinion of the commission, let's move forward with a workshop and then have the discussion, do we want to have a commission? Because right now, like, we're, I'm hearing from colleagues, and myself as well, that like, we kind of, we have this thing where we want something, we want input, we want to make sure we have some consistency of people, but we have no idea what that looks like. So we're just kind of throwing things out there and hoping something sticks. I think if we just pause, say, we're going to move forward and keep going and doing something for the community and getting their input, let's first get the input of them, and then let's see next, hey, let's then make the decision. Because I think we're just going too fast, where I think we're going to do great work either way. So what do my colleagues think of something like that? Is that something we can be in consensus about, to move a little slower?
Yeah, I hundred percent agree. I mean, I, you know, Zach, I get what you're saying, understand what you're saying, Mayor Protem, I think we're all kind of on the same page here. We don't know exactly what the function and form and substance is, so let's figure that out.
I like that.
Yeah.
I see heads nodding, so that's a good thing. So what I'm hearing, Randy, is for the question mark, for the unknown, is in the very near term, let's schedule a noticed council meeting workshop, inviting all current members of the Community Services Commission, as well as the Ready Commission, correct? And that's an actionable item from tonight. We schedule it, we do it in the workshop, we do it in workshop setting in the conference center, we set it up, it's noticed appropriately, we have a tight agenda. Maybe we even have it a third-party facilitator, you know, versus Randy or I doing that, or the council doing it. And we have, we bring someone in to, basically with the whiteboards, and we listen to all of our current commissioners, give them tight questions in advance so they can prepare accordingly, and listen to both commissions and then open up the conversation. Maybe that will reveal the crossover between these two respective commission bodies, and maybe it'll make it a little more clear as to what the council ultimately wants to see in a reimagined people commission that we're calling for now. So if that is consensus, we can absolutely deliver that. And, you know, I, I'm, I'll speak for the commissioners that are in, I think they would all welcome that opportunity and embrace it, and they'd have a lot of value to add to the conversation, too. So I think that is a good idea.
Well summarized. Do you have what you need for question number three? City Clerk?
Yes, I do have what I need for question number three. Whatever, next question, whatever the commissions and the council comes up with as far as the subject matter jurisdiction, what is the proposed number of members that council would like on this new people commission? Or is that something you want to bounce to the workshop as well?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, okay, okay, so that question, question number four will bounce.
There was one, I wanted to add for question number four in regards to the OTLAC, which currently has seven members. One of those members has been the placeholder for the architect, which has not been able to be filled in the entirety of the OTLAC. And then there's two businesses inside the OTLAC on the commission, right? There's the business owner of the OTTA, there's the business owner in the chamber, there's the landowner, resident, historical society, and VTV. I would question my colleagues and ask you if you would be okay with removing the architect completely, which would bring it down to six, combining the business owners of the OTTA and the chamber, who have a seat at that table, and open that position to a recruitment and at-large business in Old Town? Because as we know, the OTTA currently has about forty memberships, and there's over two hundred businesses in Old Town. And I would like that business seat essentially to be opened up to the Old Town businesses at large, which would essentially only be five seats on the OTLAC. The business owner, the landowner, the resident, which we have to recruit for, because the resident currently on the OTLAC submitted her resignation, and the historical society and VTV. So I would ask my colleagues your opinion on that, objections, consensus? Councilmember Stewart?
So you're basically asking, basically to shrink it to five, correct?
Shrink it to five and open, instead of having it only be an OTTA member, a chamber member, open that to the two hundred-plus businesses in Old Town, too. And it still could be, right, an OTTA member or a chamber member, but have them, you know, have the option to have a seat at the table.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, because every other commission other than Ready has only five already. I do think the OTLAC is going to be a very important commission going forward, because all you have to do is go down Mercedes and you see nothing but dirt lots on this side. So there's going to be a lot of development that's going to take place in the next ten years or so, so. So I think that's going to be, that's definitely going to be more of a hotbed commission, you know, as these developments start to, you know, take place, and what does that look like, and how is that going to impact? And, you know, so they're going to have a lot on their plate, so, but I don't have a problem with going to five.
Councilmember? That's good.
Good.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Okay, I'm going to be the odd guy out. I was going to suggest, so, I was going to suggest we do away with the architect and then just add a resident at-large for Temecula. Because I think, you know, a lot of the conversations we've had have been around, you know, residents not wanting to go to Old Town, right? Which may or may not be true for some folks, but I think there's a value in adding an at-large resident that lives in the city, not in Old Town, keeping the Old Town resident, obviously. And then I wouldn't want to expand it, so I would just say, just keep the structure the way it is, OTTA, VTV, chamber, historical society, and property owner, keep those the same, just add, in place of the architect, add a resident at-large would be. The value in that, I think, is, is it gives a voice to folks outside of Old Town, which is needed. And then it also keeps OTTA as like the, the, I think, so there's a lot of politics in Old Town business, right? Going back many, 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 many years. And I think the thing that I don't want to see happen at the OTLAC is it turn into some sort of like, for lack of a better word, turf battle or something with Old Town businesses. I don't really want to see it turn into that. I want, I want OTLAC to solve problems and not be a place where we can just sound off and sound off and sound off. So I don't know that I'd support that, but I would like to see it stay at seven and then add an at-large resident.
And I would just like to add, you know, my perspective on the OTTA, again, forty members in the OTTA, two hundred businesses in Old Town, and like you stated, I completely agree, it has become very political. And the OTTA specifically has always, you know, it's changed names and it's changed personnel and businesses that come in and out of that. And my hope with this was to remove the politics from the OTTA organization with only forty businesses. And like Councilmember Ron, how active are those businesses? In the OTTA, this opens it up to an at-large, any business within Old Town, take the politics out of it, and then we come to a consensus on, you know, placing that person on the OTLAC. But open to hearing other thoughts.
One more question. So when we went out to commissioners for OTLAC, did we have a plethora of business owners wanting to take part in this commission?
Well, you have to remember, we never recruited for that.
Oh, that's right.
We, because we automatically put the seat for OTTA.
Got it.
And then the chamber. So it was never recruited for, generally for businesses.
Yeah, okay. Because that would, that would have been my more concern, was that maybe they're too busy? I don't know.
And that could totally become, you know, my thought is, is open up to at-large, and it could be still, there's only one applicant, and they're on the OTTA and they're in the chamber.
Yeah.
So I still speak for that, but being a recruited position, we send it out, we give everyone the opportunity. Who applies?
Yeah.
Is yet to be seen.
And I don't have any heartburn on staying at seven either. I mean, to me, either way is fine. And, but, and I do think, probably when it comes to development of Old Town, more voices is better than less. And so, yeah, to have that extra person to, you know, give some input based on, you know, and I hear, you know, your at-large outside the city, I mean, not outside, outside Old Town. But I really think when it comes to OTLAC, it really needs to have some, someone has to have buy-in into Old Town to, for me personally, I'm going to take the opinion of someone who's a business owner, who, you know, who lives down here, who has some sort of skin in the game, that's going to mean more to me than some guy who lives over in Meadowview, where I live, you know? So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. So I wasn't suggesting removing the So I wasn't suggesting removing the Old Town component, I was just saying adding, adding to it. Mr. Mayor, are you, are you suggesting that the OTTA, the business owner position is, 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 could be, it could be someone that's not in OTTA and so OTTA wouldn't necessarily be on it anymore if it was? Or, or keeping OTTA, because the thinking behind, when we formed it, was to have these entities that would outlast individual businesses, right? Like, so Visit Temecula Valley is an entity, it's not a single person. And OTTA is an entity and it's not a single business. And the chamber is an entity. And so my, my understanding is when we brought this forward was that we were going to have this sort of commission that would be built off of like longstanding organizations in the community that had significant buy-in, right? And so I would be a little concerned of removing, you know, an, an entity, an organization, if we're going to remove OTTA and then there's a placeholder for another business. And then that just sort of rotates, you know, every, would we, would, would we appoint every year or every three? You know, we're going to talk about that, but that would be my concern. If you want to add another business, I think that would be fine. But I, I think having the structured OTTA, VTV, chamber, like having those structures in there is very important to the overall success of the, of the committee.
Yep, to answer your question, yes, I would like to change the structure of the current OTLAC and open it up to a business at-large. And what, we can discuss the terms later, but similar to how it is done now, every three years, it'll be the same for the business. So even though there's, you know, OTTA has a standing seat on the commission, I would look at removing OTTA from that standing seat, removing the Chamber of Commerce from that standing seat and ultimately giving a business at-large in Old Town the opportunity to have a seat at the table. Instead of saying, hey, you guys, if you're not a part of the OTTA, you're excluded. If you're not a part of the chamber, you're excluded from having a seat at the table. Because there is no opportunity for a business, not in those organizations, to have a voice.
Well, what? I mean, why not just take that extra seat that's the, whatever?
Exactly.
And just open it up to the business, right? Because I, I mean, you know, look, if, if there's going to be, I, look, I, I wouldn't want to exclude the chamber or OTTA or anybody from participating in that because I think they're going to have very valuable perspectives. And I like the idea of the institutional stability that they may bring. Whether or not they're going to be mired in politics is another question. It depends on the topic. I mean, you know, and we're not going to control that, except that as a council, if they are mired in politics, we will hear back from the staff director saying, hey, we just can't seem to get past these issues at a meeting. That's going to come back to the council. And then we restructure it and say, okay, then, you know, whatever organization, you, you don't get a seat on this anymore because you just can't seem to move off of whatever political position this is, right? I mean, that's how that would be handled. So I don't mind keeping it the way it is, it's just adding in that one extra, you know, business representative.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that compromise at all. Keep it at seven, add a business that doesn't necessarily have to be in the chamber or the OTTA, but it never voice.
And then just go ahead and remove the architect, because that way it still maintains at seven and we have the voice that we're.
Yeah, completely agree with that.
If I can kind of ask a weird possible question, what happens if we have somebody on that, in that group? Maybe we don't have somebody coming in, like, let's say, the OTTA people, they're just, they're just super busy. What do we do to fill that seat? Is there something maybe policy-wise we can say, hey, let's open it up to another business owner at that point in time if we don't have somebody? I don't know, like, what, what do we do? I just, I don't know if we've ever had that conversation.
Don't know. I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Already then.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So it sounds like there's consensus on keeping seven seats, removing the architect and adding a recruitment for businesses at large.
So to clarify, that business is limited to Old Town?
Yeah, correct.
All right, we can move on now, I think, to the next.
That was easy.
All right, so we still have six more questions to go, but I think it's going to get easier from here. So section three, we're going to talk a little bit about commission appointments and joint meetings. I'm going to roll through this really quickly, next slide please. So you guys have seen this slide before, before October 2019, we used to have, appointments were made based on subcommittee recommendations. After 2019, appointments are made in the current way that we do things now with the, with the interview, public interview process. Next slide please. Our current process, all applicants are notified that the appointment process is a public process. We accept applications electronically only unless there is a ADA need to do something different. After the close of the advertised period, we send all of the applications to the council members for review and anticipation of the appointment consideration. And then they get scheduled under business, each candidate has five minutes. This is not mandatory, it's optional. And then council members indicate their preference through a majority vote. Next slide please. Here are all the different ways we advertise. As Councilmember Ron indicated, we have, over the last three years, we have seen a significant drop in the amount of applicants. To the point where you might even have two or three vacancies and you have seven applications. So you guys have seen how that's gone over, over, the last go-round especially. Next, so if we, oh, one slide back. So again, here are some opportunities and challenges. We really need to grow our candidate pool with qualified applicants, maybe engage our new residents a little bit more. The challenges that we've heard from commissioners are either a lack of applicant interest, I'm sorry, the, not from commissioners, from applicants, it's just general lack of applicant interest. Nobody wants to be involved with government right now, experience or just time availability. Next slide please. All right, so this is how it's typically done. Where either, other jurisdictions are either doing it the way we're doing it now, they're doing it the way we used to do it through subcommittee recommendations. If they're a strong city or directly elected mayor, the mayor's making recommendations. Or they're doing it via appointment from each council member. Each council member makes their appointment either from the city at-large or through their district. The other piece that's a little bit different is instead of having public interviews, the applications are just included in the agenda packet and then that still covers our public process. So next slide please. Joint meetings, 2016 is when we started the joint meetings. It was an opportunity for once a year for the commissions to come before the city council and go ahead and showcase their work from the previous year and receive direction from the council for the upcoming year. As you know, that process has outlived kind of its interaction. What's happening since the last several years is commissions, they show up, they talk about their three accomplishments from the previous year. And there really isn't a lot of direction that comes from council on what they should be working for the upcoming year. Sometimes there's not even questions. So that process, I think, has kind of outlived itself. Next slide please. However, last year we tried something different. We tried the joint meetings. And so we had two joint meetings, one with the planning commission and one with the Ready Commission. And the commissioners raved about it, the council raved about it. So this might be an alternative to that joint meeting annually. Next slide please. So unless you have any questions, we'll go to the direction slide, next slide. All right, so, and question number five. What if any change is proposed to how council makes appointments? What if any change is proposed to the term of office? So if the council wants to go to individual appointments, do you want to change the term of commissioners from three to four years to match your terms of office? How do you want to do the public interviews? Do you want to include only the applications in the agenda packet? Do you want to do something different? And do you want to go ahead and eliminate the joint meeting process and replace it with workshops or something else on an as-needed basis? Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back over to you.
We will start with question number five. What if any change is proposed to how the council makes appointments to the commissions? Would any of my colleagues like to see a change on how we make appointments? Councilmember Ron?
Can I, can I just say, so part of my whole calculus on this is, is going to be whether or not we do something with a third commission, right? So if we only have OTLAC, which its membership is predefined for us and there's two, you know, potentially at-large or whatever that would, that would apply that aren't based on an organization, that's something I think the council generally, we would all just kind of decide on, right? It wouldn't be appointed to somebody. Which leaves planning commission as, you know, our, let's say we don't ultimately have any other commissioner or board that we, we put together, that's the only one. So then my calculus on this changes because do I, do I want to appoint myself? Do I want to do what we're continuing to do, which is the easiest process? I don't know. It depends on whether or not we have a third, you know, commission really that we're going to be dealing with. That's, that's how I'm viewing it. I hate to say that, but I'm, I'm not prepared maybe to, to make those kind of decisions without knowing what we're doing with the others. And I'd, I'd say that's true of, you know, six, seven and, well, not eight, that one's easy. I like the workshops, but, you know, for the rest of those, I, I don't know. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
The city manager. City manager, over, over the last year or so, there's been discussions as far as interview processes, what works, what doesn't. If I can ask you what you're seeing as far as why the process needs to change and some of the things maybe you've discussed with, whether myself or anybody else, that would be really insightful, because you're working with the staff directly, you're kind of hearing what's coming down the pipeline.
Sure. My observations, and this is not meant to disparage sort of the current process the council's chosen, but I see a process and all I can compare it to is, the closest thing is how we hire people for the city of Temecula, because that's, that's what we do. And you guys have the opportunity several times a year to interview folks that you want to consider as an employee. You're pointing them for a specific term, so they're accountable to you, the city council. So I see a supervisor-employee relationship that's playing out in a public meeting. So they apply, they're invited to come to the council meeting. Many choose not to show up. And for me, I can't even fathom not showing up for an interview and being given a job. That's personally how I feel. So the process that we have, maybe thirty percent of the people actually show up to introduce themselves to the council. Now, the council could have reached out to them privately and you guys can do your own sort of backgrounds and talk to people and reference checks, and I encourage that. But when folks don't actually show up to stand in front of you in audition for a job for one, two, three or four years, I'm not sure why they're even being considered for those appointments. That's my professional opinion. So we, we go through this charrette and many times folks are introducing themselves. You have them resume in front of you and many times I, I don't see an active back-and-forth engagement, for whatever reason. And the, the individual sits down, moves on, sometimes there's multiple people applying for the same position and ultimately you guys select somebody. It's very transparent, it's sometimes very awkward, but I just see a process that can probably be improved. That's just my honest take.
And Mr. City Manager?
Did I, did I answer your question?
Yes, sir, you did.
Probably more than you wanted to know.
No, no, that's, that's exactly what I was thinking too, because I, I know there's been some discussion with staff for myself, just going back and forth and taking a look at just that single appointee, you know. I, that's something that I've, I've noticed for sure over the last few years is doing the interviews for sure. You know, they come up, they have their, I think it's five minutes to talk and I really, I can say for myself truly that, that's one of the things I do is I go through that book and I call. I know we just had one of our commissioners here a few minutes ago. I remember having met him for the first time on the phone through that book and getting that conversation. You know, one of the issues I'm concerned about too is, could we create less staff time? You know, in going through this and the process and things like that. I don't know if there's any way to kind of downsize that a little bit for them, that there's a lot going on for, in order for us, just for people not to show up and, and such. So my question is, is there a way that we can streamline it to make it a little bit more conducive for staff time to make it, to make sure that these people show up and that we get the people who we need here to represent the commission itself?
Councilmember Alexander, thank you for bringing that up. I did want to point out one fact, that again, our applicant pool is so small. If you are only going to consider individuals that are showing up, your candidate pool gets smaller. So is there another way that you can communicate with small applicant pools that don't consider that piece of it? And that's something I just want you to, to know from a factual basis, that's.
And I think we've had that discussion, Randy, and I'm so glad you brought that up because it, that was one of the things I actually wrote down here is, you know, I prefer somebody to show up to an interview, like, that's just, I'm old school, call me old school, but you look at, like, my daughter's going through an interview process right now, everything's done via Zoom. Can we maybe get into the century a little bit more? Is that something we need to do and take a look at? Is it something maybe people send videos in and we observe and watch? And we have to do a little bit more on our, our end, but that's what we're here to do. So thank you for that, because that's, that's actually a part that I wanted to bring up as well.
Thank you, Mayor, for telling me. Councilmember Stu?
I'm actually in favor of the individual appointment by each city councilman based on their district, only because if I put it out there that I'm looking for a planning commissioner from my district, they're going to respond directly to me. And I'm going to have that chance and opportunity to vet that person or those persons. And, and unfortunately, when you apply for a whole council vote, somehow you can lose the, you, you, you could feel like, yeah, Stu wants me, but if the other guys don't, I'm, I'm toast. And so I, I would rather have it and then concurrent with your term. So if I'm in my third year, guess what? You're a three-year commissioner. If I'm in my, you know, two years in, you're a two-year commissioner, one-year commissioner. Whatever that is, it goes concurrent with the, the council person. That way, the next council person who takes my place will have the opportunity to again, invest in his district, her district, find that one person that they can have that and, and that open communication, you know, it might be someone you know or it might be someone you admire in the community as a business owner or as a, you know, a social advocate or whatever. But I think each of us have those people that, that I think would be very impactful in whatever commission choices we're making. So that's my opinion. I, I, I think it is very convoluted when we have this, you know, this mass where we all get to vote and I don't know, I, a lot of times I find myself frustrated. So it's like, that's why I would rather have my own pick for each of these commissions, whether we have one or three, I'd rather have my choice, my person. That way I have my communication directly with that person as far as what's happening in the planning commission, what's happening in OTLAC, what's happening in. So that's, that's my thought.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Stu. Councilmember Schmick?
Thank you. Yeah, so, you know, being, having been on both sides of this, so I was appointed by a subcommittee. So councilmembers Nagar and Washington were the subcommittee and they reached out to me and, you know, said, we'd like you to serve on a commission and, and that was how that process went. You know, we changed it up and to try to be a little more transparent. And, you know, I think the city manager's being very kind in saying that it could use improvement. I think the system's completely broken. I think it's really, really, really difficult. I've been on some hiring committees for outside agencies and it's a pretty strict process, right? You ask a question to one candidate, you ask the same question to all the candidates and we don't do that, right? And so that's typically why I don't ask questions, because, well, then I'm going to ask the same question of every single candidate, you've got twenty people. And, and so while in theory the, the process was, you know, it was a good idea in practice, not so much. And so I'm not really happy with it. As far as like the recruitment, I do think the owner should be on the individual council member. I think that, that, you know, and this happens, right, when, the way we do it now. You know, I might approach someone and say, hey, I think you'd be really good on community services. I think you'd be really good on Ready, whatever it is. And the first question is, do you think I have three votes? You know, because I'm going to go through this process and I'm going to submit all this, I'm going to get my letters of rec, I'm going to put my CV together, I'm going to do all these things, I'm going to come, I'm going to do five minutes in front of you and I'm going to get your vote, but I'm not going to get the others to, to Councilmember Stu's point. And so there's a lot of good people that haven't even applied because of that. And, and I'll just be honest with people and say, I don't know, I can't guarantee you how that's going to play out because it's an interesting process. So I think, you know, we're not going to have an issue. an interesting process. So I think, you know, we're not going to have an issue with, like, finding qualified people. I mean, our commissions are already stocked with qualified people, so we have that built in. My only, sort of like disagreement would be on the district versus at-large. I think it should be at-large. I think you should be able to appoint anyone in the city, and it shouldn't be tied to your district. It should be concurrent with your council term, but I would feel like more comfortable saying, like, well, we can appoint anyone. They're all residents of the city, and they shouldn't be tied to that same district boundary that we are. So that would be my only difference.
Councilmember Ron?
So just a little bit of history on why we ended up where we are, and I know the system was imperfect. The part of the reason why we ended up there was because I had brought this forward, saying, hey, planning commissioners, traffic safety didn't matter. If you didn't sit on the subcommittee, you never had really an opportunity to say anything about who got appointed, you know. And I was sitting here as a new council member at the time saying, when are we even here then? If, you know, you're appointing people that are supposed to represent us, and I have no voice in it. And it was abundantly clear that, you know, those two folks would stay on that subcommittee forever and spend 10 years basically dictating a planning commission, you know. And so my original proposal was, yeah, let's do it by district or have each council member. And nobody wanted that because nobody wanted to, you know, upset the apple cart, but also nobody wanted the direct accountability. That was part of the discussion. Well, I don't want to appoint somebody and then have them reflect on me. Well, you know what? That's your responsibility as a council member. The other comment was, well, what if I don't have somebody qualified from my district or I can't find somebody? Well, then you shouldn't be on the council. You know, like, if you can't find a single person in your district or in the city to serve on the planning commission, you're in the wrong position, right? So I'm thrilled to hear all of this. I agree with at-large. I'd be okay with that as well. I don't mind any of it. I just feel like, again, my only hesitation is, if all we have is the planning commission, I don't mind, you know, going through this whole process, but, you know, it, you know, changes my opinion slightly if we have more than one, you know, commission that we have responsibility for. And mostly just the process, the selection process, but that's fine.
Yep. And for me, I, you know, try to look at the pros and cons of both models, and I would agree that the current method is awkward, but I'll be the one outlier here where I feel like coming to a consensus on our commissioners is a big deal, right? Because, and this, and my fear is, is the perception of lack of transparency and lack of fairness or favoritism, right? Because if someone knows that, you know, John Doe has been selected, I selected him, I appointed him, there's going to be less applicants because they know I'm going to select John Doe to be, you know, on my planning commission or on my people commission. So I think that, you know, for me, I just, I look at the lack of transparency that that could have a vision for people out there. And we already have a hard time recruiting people. Will this create more of a hard time creating, you know, because this is all about who you know, right? If you don't know me and we're not... It's a hard one for me. I like building the consensus. If you looked at the most recent commission hearings, where I agree with, if someone doesn't show up for the interview, they don't get the job. And that was very apparent, you know, when Commissioner Faulkner stepped down, we tried to fill the ready commission. No one came to the interview, and we said, you know, we're just going to leave that position vacant. But we had to come to a consensus, right, because not everyone agreed on that. And similar with a planning commissioner, you know, it was a three-to-one vote, and there's a couple that were two-to-two. But I think that building that consensus for that commissioner is important. But I also see the pro of being able to select someone that I want to be on that committee. Because to me, you know, it's more control for us. And, you know, just taking a step back and trying to look at that, it's like, I would love more control, but I also want to show the public that you don't have to know me to get on a commission. I don't want you to have to know me. I want you to have to come and interview, and the majority of the council selects you for that commission. But that's my position. I totally understand, you know, wanting to have that control and wanting to select exactly who we want. I just see it as, you know, personally not the best way to do it, even though the current process is awkward. I feel like that's the most transparent, building consensus on the majority, because I want you to come to the interview not knowing if you have the job. I don't want you to come up here and, you know, I called you five minutes before and said, hey, it's yours, buddy. There's going to be three other people that are interviewing, but it's yours. And to me, that is, you know, that's the who's who, who you know. But again, that's my perspective. It sounds like, you know, there's a collective majority that would like to do the council-selected individual selection appointments. So I think that's what we'll move forward with.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll also confirm that I hear council consensus to go ahead and do individual council member appointments, whether it's the planning commission, people commission, whatever it is, and that we will still recruit at-large. And then council members would just suggest to their individual folks that they're thinking would make a good commissioner to go ahead and apply. We would still give the whole application packet to you from all the applicants at the city, and then it's up to you, each one of you, on who you decide to apply.
And for that, would we have to have consensus prior to, so we don't select the same person?
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, I don't know that you would necessarily need to do that. That part would have to be hashed out on the dais. Like, if somebody says, oh, I was going to select that person, oh, I was going to select that person. But the only way to get the larger applicant pool, because you might have a situation where if you're appointing by districts, you only have one person apply, as opposed to at least you're considering everybody. You could still appoint whoever you want, but otherwise it takes that, if somebody applies that is more qualified than the person you were thinking, do you want to retain that ability instead of just by district?
Yep. I know. I totally understand that. It's just hard for me, you know, moving forward. Just, I see what it's going to turn into, because we're going to know who we're going to appoint prior to the meeting, and there's going to be less people that even apply, you know.
Yeah, but, but we kind of know that anyway, right? I mean, you know, we've got all the applicants, and even when we had 90-plus, you know, we all had a matrix that we put together that kind of ranked everybody and looked at their qualifications, talked to a few folks, and kind of had an idea. I'll be honest, I've been swayed at the, and that's the one thing that I liked about the public process. I've been swayed by folks who came there with a very compelling story that didn't make it into the application, that was, you know, wow, their perspective could be incredibly valuable to the city. You know, and we've had one, you know, member who applied like three times before she got on, you know, and it was like, and I kept telling her, it's like, just keep applying. We're going to find a place for you because you're a talented person. So, you know, I'm kind of torn, like you say. And if we're, you know, thumb wrestling over, you know, the same individual that we want to appoint, then, you know, again, this is one of those things that we just kind of cross when we get there.
What if we were to do it in the sense of an applicant applying for a city council member just directly? So if I have somebody and say, hey, no, I want to work under Councilmember Schwank, instead of having kind of us pick and fight over the best person for us, how about they kind of choose who they want to be under directly for that period of time? Because the other thing, and I, going back again to the application process that the city manager was talking about, and myself and Randy, you know, I look at, for instance, Mayor, like you as a firefighter, we've had first responders come who are fantastic applicants, but they weren't able to make it here. So how do we kind of, again, go, so we're not going to this through the same process? And that's the biggest issue that we're dealing with, is when they come, maybe they can't come. I've noticed it for the last few years. So again, I kind of like the idea of, could they pick us, in a sense, to fall under? And then through there, we can pick the applicant. Because honestly, if, yes, we see people for, you know, a good position, but to be a good council member, we need to look at the entire pool of people. And I would hope that we would be those individuals to do that, rather than, like, already have somebody in mind. Oh, I already have somebody in mind for that position. If we were already thinking that, then we're not doing our jobs correctly. Just like as a city manager comes in, you know, he can't just go, oh, I definitely want that person. He might think that, but he has to look at everybody because the minds might change. So I don't know if that's something we want to do. Somebody can pick us, and then we can pick from that pool.
Well, and I think you got to remember too, we're not going to run into a position where all five of us are going to be picking a commissioner, because my term ends in four more years, three and a half more years, you know. Yours ends in two, yours ends in two, yours ends in two. So whoever you would pick, it would expire at that point anyways, and you would be stuck then, you know, if you get reelected, to appoint or continue the same appointment. So I don't think we're going to have that issue based on just the way, if it runs with our term, then it's our decision. So...
I like our decision, just being our decision.
Yeah.
In a sense, I see nothing wrong with that.
Yeah.
So it sounds like individ... Oh, Councilmember Schwank?
Yeah, no, so, but I do think, you know, so Councilmember Stu, are you saying you're not going to make a commission appointment for the balance of your term? If we were to change things, or would you make an appointment?
Yeah. So whatever, whenever we decided to term that out, because that's probably one of the next, you know, another question. So it's like, but when it's my term, so if at the end of this year, then whoever I pick will have three years.
Yeah. Okay.
Because it follows my term.
Yes.
No, and that's what I was thinking we're all going to do, you know. I do like Mayor Potem's idea of putting the onus on the individual council member. I think that's where it needs to land, right? And I don't know that the process would be great if we did an open sort of enrollment, and then there was a, there was a book, and we all sort of like picked through the book, and then we're thumb wrestling or whatever over an individual candidate. I think that we need to take responsibility as an individual council member for the representatives that we put forward, whether that's, you know, people in our networks, or people that we, that we run into, or people that approach us. I mean, we meet new people every single day. We're meeting new people that are, you know, able to add value to the city like right now. So I really want us to think about the process and not have it be, you know, we get this big binder where we're sort of going through everything. Because, and Councilmember Ron, I'm with you on the process. Like, I get why we did what we did, and I wasn't trying to be rude or anything in saying that it's broken. It's just, it just sort of is what it is. But I don't like the idea of us continuing to do that for an individual appointment. Like, I don't want to have everyone come in, because we can sit up here and say, like, oh, you know, we have this big book and, you know, have this big open mine, but you read through the book and you, like, people who are qualified, they just write up to the top really quickly, right? And that pool becomes even smaller. So I want us to do it in a way where, you know, even if it is, is a public recruitment, but it's through the council member, the individual council member, I would really like to see that. I think there would be a ton of value in that. And it would hold us accountable. It wouldn't be, you know, like, it would be up to the individual council member. If people optically looked at that and they're like, oh, that's an old boys' club there, well, that's on you, right? Or if they looked at you and they said, well, that's a good pick. I respect that pick. That's on you, right? So it's up to us individually to do that. And so I think, you know, even if we went to, I just submitted my recommendation after the, after the selection or the enrollment or whatever you want to call it, the recruitment rolls out, and here's my, here's my commission selections. And it goes on consent, and it's on me, you know. It's on you, and you, and you, and you. And if that commissioner isn't carrying the water or isn't doing a good job, well, that's on you, and you replace them, you know. And you don't have to wait four years, you know. You can do it right away. So that's the way I'd like to see it happen.
All right. I've said my two cents. I disagree with it, but the consensus is public recruitment process directly to the council member at-large.
Okay, I need, we need to back up for just a minute. So with this piece about recruitment directly to the council member, what does that mean? So we have one recruitment process, and out of that one recruitment process, we give you guys all the applications. You each individually say then, I want this person, this person, this person.
No, they need to apply to the council member. So they need a little box when they're going through the online application that says, which, which council member are you applying to represent, to work with? Choose one.
Okay. That's going to change the entire recruitment process.
Right.
It would still be the same format as... Sorry. It would still be the same format as the application, because I still want to get the background on that, on that individual. But let's say I have Joe Schmo say, hey, I want to be a commissioner for planning for, under CalFIS. He can go in there, and within that, he would basically check CalFIS's box and be able to drop his application. For at the time when we're ready to take a look at who we want to recruit or whatnot, I can set up individual appointments with the people that I want to interview and who've basically submitted applications and move forward from there. So Schwank wouldn't get mine, I wouldn't get his. It would just be that individual person, but we'd still have the same process as far as just receiving the application and nothing else. Am I right on that?
Okay, so this makes sense. It's after the initial recruitment. And let me explain to you why. If what we're doing is saying, we have a District One opening and we have a District Three opening. To apply to serve for District One, go ahead and apply here. To apply for District Three, go ahead and apply here. If we do that initially, you understand that there might be a situation where a council member has no applications if nobody applies.
That's a problem.
That's a problem. Or their friend thought they were going to apply, but then they missed the deadline and didn't apply, because we've had those kinds of situations as well. Or they were confused and checked the wrong box. So I just see from an administration standpoint, this turning into a little bit of maybe challenge. Can we instead do a line where everybody applies, and then you do a dropdown for which council member you would prefer, but everybody still gets everything? Because then if you don't have an applicant, if nobody picked you, you still get all of the applications because you're still, you might still apply at-large. If you only want to apply, if you only want to consider the people that want you, and you got three applications, great, wonderful. But if nobody picked you, do you still want to have an appointee from the rest of the group?
But I think that's where Councilmember Ron was saying, this is onus on the council member itself. Like, we have to be... Thank you.
Right.
Yes. And if your friend does not get an application in time, that's their problem.
Okay.
Just my thought.
No, that's fine. It's just, we, I know from a, from a frontline perspective, when we do an annual recruitment, how many people forget to add an attachment? How many people forget to check a box? How many people, especially our applicants that are not technologically savvy?
Could you make it so, I'm thinking like Google Docs or something like that, that there's a point to where you cannot submit unless that box is checked?
Yeah. We already, our forum, I could already make everything mandatory.
Okay, so...
But you're hearing the concerns from Randy, from the city clerk, and despite that, and I'm looking at everyone in the council, you understand that there's going to be some challenges, but this is the direction that the council wants to head into right now. Is that, is that fair?
That is the consensus of the majority of the council, even though I have to reiterate that I adamantly disagree. That is the consensus of the council. To move forward with individual appointments, like we just stated with hopefully a dropdown with a preferred council member, the public recruitment process, applications in the agenda, not a public interview, is that what I heard on the...
Yes.
And the term of office matches the term of the council member that selects that commissioner.
Okay. So the first go-around, I want to make sure it's clear. The first go-around, assuming everybody's terms expire at the end of this calendar year, the first go-around, all council members would make appointments, and they would, we would kind of, the second go-around, we would true-up to kind of who was up for that election. So we want to make sure that that understanding is clear too, is that if we did, assuming in the next two months, we can come up with what this people commission is going to look like, in the fall, we would do a recruitment, and then council in January, every single council member would make their appointment. Some might only have a one-year appointment because their term is up in 2026. Some might have a three-year appointment. And then if they get reelected, then that January, they would make a four-year appointment. So I just, I want to make sure, like, there's an understanding with this all.
Understanding.
Okay?
Yes.
Great.
And for the last one, I think we got five, six, seven, number eight. Is there consensus that we all agree on workshops as needed as opposed to the annual joint meetings here at the dais? Consensus on workshops as needed for item number eight?
Got it.
We are ready for the next slide.
A question... Oh, yes. A question, oh, yes, we are. Last, last, last slide. Last two questions. Here it is. What is the effective date? And is there any other direction you guys wanna give us?
Item number nine, what is the effective date of any changes proposed? Would we all come to a consensus that these all start January 1, 2026?
Yes. I was gonna say, what's the date today? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea, January. It gives us a chance to finish everything that we've got on the calendar year, so I think that's a good idea.
Yep. All right, finish the calendar year with the current process. New process starts January 1, 2026. Is that good for you, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, we do, we do have consensus that, um, the, I hear consensus that the city council, um, will go ahead and, um, have every single commission, um, term on all five boards and commissions, go ahead and expire at 12:31, um, 2025, and then we will do some sort of under-recruitment based on your direction. And then each council member in January will make their appointments to the planning commission and to the people commission, um, I'm just gonna refer to them as the people commission, we'll come up with a better name, um, uh, in January to serve the term that is remaining on that council member's term.
That sounds perfect. Councilmember Schwank?
I just have one comment on that. Should we appoint in the, the meeting in December, just so that there isn't, you know, if we, if you effectively end at 12:31, but we're not gonna meet until, you know, January 12th or whatever? Like, is, would it be better if we just did it? And then that way, when, you know, a new council member comes on, you know, they get, they get onboarded that meeting, and that could be an item just at the very tail end of that meeting. Would that make it easier?
We actually do that now. So we have terms that currently expire, December 31st of that calendar year. We make appointments at the second meeting, at the first or second meeting in November, so that that next person starts automatically on January 1st, and that first meeting in January, um, we have orientation in January, we swear them in in January. So with that process, we'll, we'll keep that same orientation schedule.
Perfect. Perfect. Item number 10, is there any other direction the council would like to provide?
Just one, just one. I've been look, I've been waiting for this. Fire-safe council. I just wanna put it out there, that's, that's one of the outstanding items on what we've talked about for, you know, it doesn't fit under any of the boards' commissions, it's not a traditional one, but I wanna make sure that we don't lose sight of that, because it still would have a significant city oversight and responsibility. So just not sure what you wanna do with that, but I'm throwing it out there.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question on that? Cause, um, I don't know enough, or I know enough to be dangerous, but I think Riverside County has a fire-safe council, if I'm not mistaken? They do not?
There's, so, so they're usually defined by jurisdiction, but the city of Temecula specifically, so there's one that sort of services the Dulles up area, one that's sort of wine country-based, but not one that is specific Temecula.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're not represented by somebody else? That, that's the...
No, and if, if we were, we wouldn't want to be. Um, because, I mean, you know, well, let's be clear, is, is, you know, this needs to be something that's directed for the city of Temecula, not lumped into, you know, something in, in incorporated Riverside County that just sort of takes us into consideration. So if that is the case, then we would be redefining, um, you know, what they feel their jurisdiction would be, so...
How, how would you like me to field that direction? Is that a, more or less like a, a, a future agenda item as part of previous conversations that we work with Chief Crater to devise and bring something back? Or do you have a, a different vision for that?
I don't know. Um, I, I'm just putting it out there, because I wasn't sure if it fit in this conversation or not, but it's just one additional thing that the city and the council would sort of have that oversight on.
If the council's concurrence tonight was, we're talking about reimagining all of this, if, if you guys are supportive of that, I'll just heed that direction and add it to my list of things to do, and, um, and work with Chief Crater to, to, to put together some concepts and ideas, and work directly with you, Councilman Ron, and then we can bring it back to your colleagues.
Thank you.
If that's okay.
Uh, where's the money gonna come for this?
There is none. It's all grant-funded.
I'm just giving you a hard...
I know, I know. I'm a fiscal conservative. Don't worry, I got this.
Are ya?
Okay, I think you have all of the direction needed for item number 16.